Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the November 4th meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If I could, please remind everybody to silence your electronic devices, and I'm triple checking mine to make sure mine doesn't go off. So if you would, please stand and join me in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Lord, we ask you to bless our meeting tonight. Grant us wisdom and patience as we work to advance the common good of all in our city. We pray especially tonight for those affected by Hurricane Melissa. May they feel your comfort and support as they recover and rebuild. We pray also for those impacted by the government shutdown, especially those in need of vital support for basic needs. Help our government leaders to find a pathway soon to restoring vital services. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, one nation for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So for those of you who don't often join us, we have a tradition here at Temple Terrace whereby we begin the meeting with an interesting or historical fact concerning our city or the region. We rotate that duty, and tonight it falls on Vice Mayor Schisler. But Vice Mayor Schisler has passed the buck to one of our firefighters, who has been here before and done a terrific job and told us some of the history of the fire department. I'm told today is like the point two version, right? Is that okay? So firefighter Hossi, thank you for being here with us. Thank you.
Yep, firefighter Alec Hossi presenting the historic fact today. So tonight, we're looking at 1975 to 2000, so that range for the fire department. And then we have a presentation in front of you. So in 1976, the department purchased this Ward La France pumper truck for $47,000. This was when we had the first fire station at 104 Bullard Parkway. It was too big to actually fit in the station, so they kept it at the Public Works Garage, and then they would use it as needed. So if they got a big fire, they would actually drive a truck to the garage, pick up this truck, and then go to the fire. So a little bit different than what we do today. We're much more efficient than that now.
Point it that way.
All right. So in 1977, ground was broken for new headquarters due to what I was just telling you about that Ward La France. They recognized that they needed a bigger station to house some of these modern fire apparatus, which were getting much bigger than what they had seen in the past. So Fire Station 1, they broke ground, and here you see our fire chiefs in this picture and a few of the firefighters at the time. So here they are. This is actually, if any of you guys have been in Station 1, these are the stairs leading up to the bunk rooms and the common areas of the fire station. That's actually the fire pole they're putting the padding on. So when we slide down the pole, that's still there today. When we slide down, that's what we're landing on. And then that was when Station 1 was complete. It was built for $571,000 back in 1978. So stations today, also a lot more expensive than they were back then. These are some of the apparatus inside the station. Again, if you guys have been in Station 1, you might recognize that some of those walls have changed a little bit. The inside of the station actually used to be opened up, so when the trucks were pulling into the bay, some of those exhaust gases were actually going up into the common area of the station. So that's been walled off now. They kind of learned over the years that cancer is pretty bad for us firefighters, and for everyone for that matter. And this is the ladder truck that they had also bought at the time. So same year that they built the fire station, they bought this 1978 American La France, and it had a 75-foot stick on it. So this greatly impacted the fire department because it allowed us to get into places that we never could before. We never had an aerial apparatus before. And that truck also cost $135,000. Here is the fire chief and a couple of the other firefighters actually testing it for the first time. So they went out and raised the aerial and flowed water from it. So if you know a lot about Temple Terrace's history, you know about the Bat Tower fire in 1979. They actually got photographs of them putting the fire out. So this is one of those photos. In the early 1980s, you know, we progressed quite a bit, but we had some growing pains as well. After prolonged contract disputes, our original union, Local 2160, de-unionized. They found that they were not getting as good a wages as some of the other folks who weren't in the union, so they actually decided to disband the union, and they went without it for several years. This is also 1982. This is the library fire. So right next door to Station 1, we have the library at 202 Bullard Parkway. So at 2:00 AM, they had a fire there, and the crews were able to get there, and they had the fire under control within 45 minutes. But they did, they said there was $200,000 in damages to the library at the time. In 1986, we took delivery of a Spartan FMC pumper. This was capable of 1,250 gallons per minute. In that same year, we dedicated Fire Station 2, which was made possible through a partnership with GTE Collier, whom donated three acres of land to the city, as well as $400,000 towards the construction of the fire station. These are some photos of the inside. What I think's interesting about this article is it talks about, "Forget fire engine red, the interior walls of the new Temple Terrace Fire Station were painted in shades of plum, teal, and bright yellow." Very 1980s. By the late 80s, the department expanded its support fleet with two EconoLine club wagons, which we purchased from Hillsborough County for transport and on-scene operations. And by 1989, we started implementing them as BLS units. So we weren't doing ALS quite yet in the city, but this was a way to get our BLS responders to the scene quickly and start rendering aid to patients on car accidents and stuff like that. In 1990, or in the 1990s, it was marked with rapid evolution for the fire department, and in 1990, the city began exploring ALS services, so advanced life support services, which was preparing us to do paramedic-level care to residents. In 1991, we purchased an Emergency One pumper, which featured modern upgrades like rear cab doors. Up until this point, the firefighters who were in the back of the apparatus did not have doors to actually keep them in place. So it was just what was called an open cab. You could fall right out of it. So in 1995, we purchased this, I'm sorry, 1991 as well, we purchased this F-350, which was also the first ALS unit. This is what got us into ALS transport in Temple Terrace. In 1995, the union reorganized under the name Local 3582, with Dean Mendez serving as the first president. And then the same year, Chief Ernie Hires was appointed as the fire chief, marking the beginning of a transformative leadership era. He helped implement paramedic service, leading to the department being recognized as an Advanced Life Support Agency, and later guided TTFD to accreditation. In 1998, we purchased a Dodge Ram 3500 brush truck to replace 1960's brush truck that the firefighters had actually built themselves. By 1999, modernization continued with the arrival of this Pierce Quantum 75-foot aerial, pumped 1,750 gallons per minute, and had a 500-gallon water tank. It cost $607,000. The new millennium began with a significant mutual aid response in 2000. This is where Temple Terrace assisted Tampa Fire Rescue during the historic Ebor City Fire. This was a six-alarm inferno that drew over 150 firefighters from three different counties. Temple Terrace Ladder 21 and Fire Chief Ernie Hires were assigned to protect the post office during this massive blaze. So that same year, we purchased another Pierce Quantum pumper, and we also purchased a Freightliner Type 1 ambulance. So you'll see here over these last couple of photos, this is when we started to do a white and red color scheme. So that didn't get changed until pretty recently, I think 2009, but we kept the white trucks for a while. 2000 as well, we started hosting our major open house event. We landed this life-flight helicopter there, and this has now become a tradition for our open houses. That's all I have for you. I do just want to take a moment to recognize that from 1975 to 2000, our department has come great leaps and bounds. We went from having one station that was actually a police and fire station, never really intended to be a sole fire station, to now having a station that we still have today on Bullard. We have Station 2 in telecom, and we have all these modern trucks, and we started doing ALS service. I mean, this was a very transformative 25 years for our department. So.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me speak. Thank you very much.
I do have one comment. Thank you, Alec. That's very, very good information. The $571,000 cost to build the fire station back then would now be, in today's dollars, be 3.4 million. So just inflation and the time value. Thank you very much.
Very good. That was pretty good. So next up, we have the Employee of the Month. David Quintero, would please approach the... Good evening, sir. So you guys have heard me talk a lot about Employees of the Month recently, and Employee of the Year at our last meeting. So this is a really high honor to get this, particularly because these Employees of the Month are chosen by a committee of employees. So it's actually employees choosing the employees. And we have a pretty high bar of employees in Temple Terrace, so to get recognized as Employee of the Month among all these departments is pretty outstanding. And so, little information about David. David Quintero is being recognized as the Employee of the Month for September. David's gone above and beyond his role, consistently demonstrating dedication, teamwork, and technical expertise that make him an invaluable member of the city's IT department. His quick response and willingness to help have earned him the trust and appreciation of employees across all departments, especially Fire, Police, and Public Safety Communications. David played a vital role in implementing the new ProPhoenix CAD system, its computer-aided dispatch, ensuring a smooth transition for our public safety team. When the project went live, he stepped up to manage the process on his own during a critical period, making sure that officers and firefighters had the technology they needed to serve the community without interruption. Since then, David has continued to improve systems and services throughout the city. He introduced a new IT help desk system that streamlined support requests and improved response times, enhanced security through multi-factor authentication on police devices, and automated portions of the employee onboarding process, helping new staff get set up more efficiently. In addition to his technical achievements, David has also completed leadership courses and will continue advanced training in 2026 as he prepares for greater responsibilities as second-in-command within the department. His commitment to growth, both personal and professionally, respects his dedication to serving the city and his colleagues at the highest level. With his professionalism, dependability, and can-do attitude, David truly embodies the spirit of teamwork and service that keeps our city running strong. We are proud to recognize David Quintero as the Employee of the Month for Temple Terrace for September 2025. Would you like to say a few words?
No.
No!
Thank you, Sally, for your help and support.
Well, we really do appreciate all you do. I know we, those of us who don't work in the building all the time, we see you kind of screwing around fixing stuff kind of behind the scenes, and so all we know is when we need something that everything works. And so thank you to you, David, and to Sally and your whole team for that. And so congratulations. You've got to get on that side, and I've done this 100 times, because I know regular workers. Next up, I'll have, if I could ask Carl Langfield and Greg Pauli to approach the podium. This is our Leisure Services Director and our Community Development Director. Thank you, gentlemen, and I'll let you tell the group about this, but in fact, go ahead. You tell them.
I'll tell them.
You tell them.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Carl Langfield, Leisure Services Director. Earlier this month, well, earlier this year, the city embarked on a project to start the planning of a new park to be known as Riverside Park, which will expand the existing Riverside Park to the vacant parcel to the east and also around the Springdale Pond area. We engaged with an engineering firm, Health Engineering, to do the design and engineering work for this job. Each year, the Hillsborough County Planning Commission awards projects for excellence in design and in planning that take place throughout the region. The Riverside Park Plan received an Award of Excellence for planning. We understand that this is a plan in progress, and it is still progressing to this day, but the Planning Commission did recognize the excellence that we are bringing forward for the future of this area, and we were recognized with this award at an awards banquet last Monday.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Pauli, anything to add?
No, I would just like to thank the council for acknowledging this award, and thank Mr. Langfield for all of the hard work that he and his team put into leading this process.
Very good. Thank you very much to both of you. Good job. So more to come. Okay, next item of business is approval of the minutes from our October 21 City Council meeting. Is there a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections to the minutes?
I have a correction. Sorry.
Well, that was going to be my question, is that we have an item on the agenda later where a council member has, is concerned that maybe the minutes don't reflect exactly what they thought happened in the meeting, so I don't know how we could vote on this now if we have an agenda item addressing the minutes or talking about the minutes later in the meeting. So that's my question.
Councilmember Kevitz.
Yeah, I do have two corrections to the minutes, and I conferred with the video recording of the last meeting, just to make sure that I was correct about this, and there is a motion missing from the minutes that was properly made while I had the floor. I quote verbatim, "I would like to make a motion that we ask Leisure Services staff to think about having a downtown event before the end of the year." There was no other motion at the time on the floor, so this is not reflected in the minutes. This was a timestamp, 2 hours, 37 minutes, and 10 seconds. The response I got was not, as would have been proper, for the chair to acknowledge the motion and ask for a second, but rather Gil Schisler said it doesn't matter, and the chair said, "We don't need a motion." So the motion was not given an opportunity to be seconded, but it should certainly still appear in the minutes. And the other item that I would like to correct, and I just have to find it briefly, there is a missing vote. So because we rushed through public comment and didn't properly close public comment, and there were still people in the audience who were intending to speak and wished to be recognized to do so, we proceeded too quickly into the consent agenda, and a vote was taken on the consent agenda, and I did not voice my vote. The process for voting in this case is viva voce, which means live voice, and if no vote is expressed verbally, either yea or nay, then there is no vote cast. The minutes, however, improperly record that it was a 5-0 vote in favor of the consent agenda. Regardless of how I would have voted on the consent agenda, and it probably was a yes, it still stands that no time was taken to properly record the votes. I was not given an opportunity to vote, and I did not, in fact, vote on that because we had rushed through public comment. And in fact, that's proven by the video, because you'll see that after the consent agenda, people are still coming up to give public comment. So in my mind, it was perfectly reasonable, especially because no one had asked for the question properly, that we were still in public comment, and it was so quick that no one had an opportunity to realize that public comment had closed, as many of the people in the audience were quite surprised. So those are the two corrections that I would like to see in the minutes. And since we have a motion on the floor that we're discussing, I would like to humbly suggest that that motion be retracted so that these corrections can be made, because they are, in fact, the truth.
Nobody's made a motion.
Sorry?
Nobody made a motion.
I heard that there was a properly seconded motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
So if we have that motion on the floor, that's what we're discussing, I will be compelled to vote no on the minutes if these corrections are not made, because they do not, in fact, reflect what happened on that day, and they are not true. So.
Get a poll second first, don't you? Pull the second first, don't we? To amend it?
No, you can amend it. It can be reseconded.
I'd be willing to amend it for the missed motion, if that's how we want to classify it, but according to our rules, a non-vote is a yea vote.
That's not.
According to number 12, rule number 12, an inaudible vote is considered a yes vote.
Which rule is that?
Pardon me?
Which rule are you citing? Let me have a look. I don't believe that's the case. So I'm happy to have a peek. So let's look at Rule 12. And also, a vote that is not, an inaudible vote is not the same as someone not speaking. Inaudible would be that I voted, but it was mumbly or too quiet to hear, whereas in this case, I did not, in fact, cast a vote. And that is, in fact, what this says, an inaudible vote shall be considered a favorable vote. My vote was not cast. It was not audible or inaudible. I was not saying or opening my mouth or doing anything at the time, because I was expecting someone to stand up for public comment. So again, it is not a 5-0 vote for the consent agenda. It is a 4-0 vote. If you want it to be a 5-0 vote, you have to give me an opportunity to vote.
Mr. Mueller.
As far as the minutes, approving of the minutes right now, I believe one of the options you could do is table the approval of the minutes until the protest is addressed under council business, or we can address it all at this time.
With respect, right now, this is a minutes correction. The protest thing, I don't know why that's on the agenda, but it's a separate topic. This is right now correcting the minutes to reflect what actually happened in the meeting.
Correct. And it seems that the protest that's on the agenda, that you did, is on the agenda at council business. If you wanted to take that up at that time, I would recommend you table the approval of the minutes until after that has been addressed.
Right now, my only concern is that the minutes do not reflect what happened in the video recording of the meeting, and that they are therefore not accurate and true. My protest addressed some of the procedural discrepancies that the chair engaged in during that meeting. That is a separate topic from what the factual record is of that meeting. So I have a timestamp that I've cited, if someone would like. I'm happy to play that timestamp so people can see that I'm telling the truth. I could go on YouTube right now, and I could pull it, and then everyone here will see that the things that I am saying are true.
As far as, I also watched the video, and with regard to your vote, or lack of a vote on the minute, I'm sorry, on the consent agenda, it was an inaudible vote. You did not, it looks as though you did not vote, and it would normally be considered, according to Rule 12, a yes vote. But it seems that you're trying to tie this in to your protest, and it would probably be better addressed then. Otherwise...
Definitely not. First of all, let me just address that point. I didn't put the protest on the agenda. I don't know who did. I don't think it should be on the agenda. The other three protests that I filed never made it onto the agenda, so I'm very suspicious as to why this protest suddenly appears on the agenda, even though I didn't put it there, and we didn't vote to put it on the agenda. So why is that even on the agenda? So we're getting a little off-topic now, but just to the point here, we're voting on approving the minutes. That vote depends on whether the minutes are true about what happened in that meeting. That's the only thing that I'm addressing right now. To your point about whether I was making an inaudible vote, or whatever that may be, let me just point out, the chair never asks for the question properly. You're supposed to say, "Are the members ready for the question?" And then you proceed to a vote where you give people an opportunity to say aye or nay. Now, in this case, the accelerated rushing through public comment meant that people did not have a proper opportunity to vote, because the procedure was not followed. So when you say that my vote was inaudible, if I'm focused on public comment and everyone else has moved on to the consent agenda, because, let's just say, that's where the direction wanted to go from the momentum of the rest of the table up here, then the issue is that the people who are still focused on expecting someone to stand up and speak and make a public comment are not going to be aware that there's already a vote going on for the consent agenda, because the proper question was not asked for. So this is the issue, and when I don't speak, it cannot be an inaudible vote. An inaudible vote is like, no, yes, whatever. I have to be moving my lips in order for it to be audible or inaudible. Lack of an action is not consent in this situation, under Robert's Rules of Order or under the council rule that Mr. Schisler just quoted, because for something to be inaudible, it has to be actually spoken. If I'm not saying anything to you, it's not inaudible, I'm just not speaking. There's a big difference there logically, philosophically, and in every other way. So that is my point.
At this point, again, my, I watched the video. I saw that four people voted on it. One person apparently didn't. It's still my opinion that it was an inaudible vote, and it would be a 5-0 vote.
I'd like the record to reflect that. Four people voted, as you just admitted, and the legal interpretation of that, if you want to record it as a 5-0 vote, at least let the record reflect that I was not given an opportunity to vote yes or no, because that is true. because that is true, and everyone here acknowledges four people voted. And it's a problem when that kind of thing happens, and for that reason, it's important to keep in the record. I'm not asking for a legal interpretation to be put in. I'm asking for a factual statement to be put in there, which, as everyone up here has admitted, has happened on both points that I just raised. And the minutes should be true and accurate, and I yield the floor.
Okay. So, counsel, I don't care what you do with the minutes. I really don't. If you want to reflect, I, I, Councilmember Kravitz, I believe is correct that he didn't vote. I don't think that's in dispute. I don't, I recall that. Couple of things I want to clarify, though, on, because now I'm getting maligned here, and I want to clarify some of this. Number one, I have forms for everybody who wants to speak. I've been in office nine years, folks. If this city really thinks that I'm trying to rush through public comment and not talk to our constituents, I'd like to know where that wild accusation comes from. Right? Anybody who knows me in this city knows that, right, I didn't see a comment from that gentleman. I apologized to him. We took his public comments immediately following the vote. There was a live motion on the floor when he waved his hand that he wanted to talk. I wanted to dispose of the live motion before, and then I brought him up immediately. So did I make a mistake? Well, I don't think I did, because I don't think I had a form from him, but did he want to speak? Apparently, he did. But in the meantime, there was a motion on the next item. So also, like I said, I've been in office nine years. I served on probably a dozen other boards. I don't think I've ever heard the chair ask the body, "Are you ready for the question?" I, if, I, I'm not a parliamentarian, right? Roberts' Rules is about this big. I'm not a parliamentarian. Is that supposed to be? Okay, we can, if that's what you want me to do, I'll start doing it, but I've never heard that. Nobody at the county does that. Nobody at the House of Representatives does. I mean, I don't ever hear that. So could be. I'm, I'm not a parliamentarian, and maybe I'm learning something new. I'm, I'm willing to grow, if I need to grow, but that was not an intentional thing. The other item, there was a motion made that was out of order, because the council had already given direction to staff when the coun, when the motion was made. Now, again, not being a parliamentarian, and by that point, having been like two hours through an excruciating meeting of getting, parsing out what color the carpet is, I was frustrated, and the motion was out of order. I probably should have said, "The motion's out of order," and I didn't say that, but you can't go make a motion to give direction to the staff that the councils already gave. And you can't make this look like this is all your idea, and then you email eight hundred people and tell them, "This is your idea. You made the motion to direct staff," when the council had already given that direction. So I'm, I am not interested. If you want to put in the record, I don't care, guys. I mean, we're spending fifteen minutes to talk about the minutes. If you want to put in there that the motion was made and it was out of order, whatever you want to put, I don't care. I just want to get things done for the city, instead of talking about what color the carpet is and having one council member trying to get credit for everything this body does, which is what it was. We had already given that direction when the motion was made. The motion was out of order. I probably should have said, "The motion's out of order," because we've already given that. I didn't do that, and I'm sorry if that makes me a failure as your mayor. I apologize. But these meetings are frustrating when we have business to move forward, and, and I'm sorry, I am human, and after hours of just mindless trivial debate about everything, I get frustrated. So I apologize. It looks like I had a hand in this in some regard. I'm sorry, counsel. You want to amend the motion?
No.
You want to vote on it? I don't care what you do.
My turn.
Well, it's a point of order. If it's a point of order, he takes precedence.
It is. It was stated that council had issued a direction to staff to do something. By what legal mechanism that, that, did that occur, if there was no motion, as was just admitted?
That's not a point of order. That's discussion.
It is indeed.
No, it's not.
Well, you're making a legal assertion here that the council told staff to do something.
Vice Mayor, you would recognize that's not a point of order. You're...
Thank you very much. I'm going to leave my motion standing as it is. Four of the five of us were paying attention to what was going on. We weren't trying to grandstand, you know, I watched it too. I watched it several times. If, if the gentleman, somebody wanted to speak, the mayor, as he said, "Okay, fine, we'll, we'll come back to him. We'll do it," and he was, and he did, and everything was taken care of. So in my mind, you chose not to vote, and that's, that's a yes vote, and that's not the first time you've done that. You've done this in the past, so, and, and we're, we're bogged down in nonsense. We really, really are. So my motion stands.
What issue is all this going on about?
This is not public comment time, sir.
I may be right. Unless someone else...
Are there others that need to be recognized? Councilmember Fernandez?
Well, I mean, all I'm going to say is, all I want is for the minutes to reflect what happened at the meeting.
Yeah.
And I don't have any issue with changing the minutes to say that the vote was four-zero. It passes at four-zero versus five-zero, and if a council member is saying that they did not vote, I am going to, I am going to agree with the difference between not making any sound versus inaudible, because I do agree that inaudible means that you have spoken in some capacity, but it's not audible.
I, I wouldn't...
So whatever, but...
But I mean, he didn't vote. I, that part is true.
Well, it's true he did vote, but if, if we're, if we're going to now define inaudible, nothing is, a non-vote, then we have to be careful with that going forward then. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to respond to some of the points that have been made.
Councilmember Kravitz.
Thank you very much. So first of all, no one's trying, trying to take credit here. I appreciate they're human. I'm not saying any of those things. This started off as a correction about what happened. I had the receipts. That's all it was. The reason why I didn't see or hear the consent agenda vote is because I was focused on the audience and the people who were trying to speak, that were not going to have an opportunity to speak if I didn't raise a point about it. And I did raise a point about it, and the only reason those people spoke in that meeting is because I did so. Otherwise, they wouldn't have stood up. No one was paying attention to them. I raised a point of order, that there were still people in the audience who wished to speak, and that is why those people were given an opportunity to speak their mind. They came all the way down here to City Hall to, to speak for three minutes about issues that are important to them, and we couldn't answer them? The, the process for recognizing people, by the way, is not that they have to fill out a form and put it in. It's under eighteen D. The shit, the chair shall recognize a citizen who wants to address the council. That's all it says. If they raise their hand, that's enough. And so no one is here trying to take credit from anyone. No one is here trying to grandstand. All I want is for the rules to be applied fairly and equally and consistently, and that has not happened in the last year that I've been up here. And it's very frustrating, because for those of us who do read the rules, it's a little bit irritating to always have the rules bent and interpreted to my detriment in this case, and the example given earlier is the perfect one. It was said that an instruction was given to staff to do something, and the only way that that happens, if we make a vote up here to instruct staff to do that by a motion. Otherwise, anyone up here can just tell staff to do something. And when I was having a nice conversation with the friendly lady from the Centennial Committee, the mayor stated that the lady should not take any instruction from me, because she should wait for instruction from the council. And the way that happens is by a motion and a vote. It is not sufficient to just say, "My motion was out of order," because the mayor or whoever up here decided to issue an instruction to staff. That isn't how these things are run. We are all up here trying to do it together. So from my perspective, and I have to say this very plainly, it's not me who's trying to take credit and assert authority or anything. It is you. And so it's very frustrating to see this, because I'm trying to go through the proper process, and when I try to get things done, I have to follow the process, but when other people want to get things done, they don't, and that is what we're seeing right here, and it has been plainly, openly admitted in this meeting, and it's, it's incomprehensible to me. The citizens expect us to get things done up here, not argue about the minutes, but I'm not the one arguing about minutes, because the minutes are wrong. I have the receipts. The city attorney has agreed with me that I didn't cast a vote, and that the motion was properly made and not asked for a second at the end, so I don't know why we're all still discussing it. Honestly, I don't know why, and if this motion passes without the correction to the minutes, the only thing that I can assume is that it's because some sort of personal grudge is being held against me for some reason. But let me remind everyone, what I'm saying is true, and the minutes are wrong.
So we give direction to staff by head nod all the time. We always have. We go down the days. Is you good with this? Is this what you want them to do? We do that all the time. That's not new. That's not a change in rules. That's been the way we've done this here since I've been around. I don't know what happened before then, so...
All right, we need to get up dead center. I'll pull my, I'll modify the motion to read four-zero on the, modify my motion for the, the minutes for the consent agenda to read four to zero, and for, I don't know, but the, the second version, I don't know how to put that. What do we do with, how do we word that? I'm not sure how to word it.
Yeah, I'm, I guess, well, I, why don't you state again what it is you feel it should say?
I'm happy to just phrase the motion, if that would be easier. So it would be, "I move to approve the minutes for the meeting on October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, with the adjustment that in the section regarding the consent agenda, the vote is recorded as four-zero and not as five-zero, and that the motion to instruct staff to think about hosting an event in the downtown Temple Terrace area by the end of the year was not taken up and asked for a second." Perfect motion. Great. Don't, let's all move on then.
Well, he pulled the motion, so...
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Okay, public comment. I will go through the forms carefully. If you wish to address the council, there are forms in the back of the room. Please fill one out and bring them to the city clerk to my left, your right. First person signed up to speak is Dwayne Zelnowski. Mr. Zelnowski, welcome, sir. Please, please begin, well, let me read this, so I make sure that I do this. Request to address the mayor and councillor in the back of the chambers. Please complete and give to the city clerk. Council agreed to a thirty-minute time limit for all public comment. To be continued at the end of the meeting if more time is needed. A three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. We ask that speakers come to the podium and state their name and city of residence. City of residence. During public comment on items not on the agenda or on items on the consent agenda, the city manager and directors in attendance do make note of these items. Assure, we like to assure residents that all of your comments are taken seriously and will be followed up on. Everybody good with that? Need any clarifications? We're, okay, Mr. Zell.
My name is Dwayne.
Hang on, hang on. You have a question?
I can't fill out a form, but can I just raise my hand and come up when everyone's done? Is that okay?
That's fine.
Fill out a form.
Oh, now I can do it?
Yeah, no, you can fill out a form now, sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Zelnowski.
Yes, my name is Dwayne Zelnowski from Temple Terrace, and today I'm discussing the current needs of St. Vincent de Paul. St. Vincent de Paul Temple Terrace has been in helping the needs of City of Temple Terrace residents since the seventies. We receive donations. We deliver food to anyone within the zip codes of Temple Terrace. We also support people in need of rent, people in need of issues with their electricity. Everything has gone down fine, except, of course, now during our current issue. The biggest problem with the current issue is, we get our food from, let's say, other large banks of food that deliver food to us or we go get it. Well, since, since the stoppage of food stamps and of WIC, those other distribution points have kept their food, leaving us with far less, or they still give, but they give very little, which means we are short tremendously. We will fail in delivering food to the needs of Temple Terrace, because there's a twofold problem. The first problem is, we're not getting the donations, we're not getting the food, and the needs of those that now are five days into not receiving their food stamps or WIC, or they got fired, or they're working without pay, still need food. I come to this council humbly to ask for a grant. We are a non-public. Cities can give grants. We ask for a grant, or at least, if you guys could hold a food drive, the city implements a food drive. Give it to us. The other food pantry that is listed on your website is the, the elementary school. Those are the two. We'll be happy to share with them, but without it, without additional help and needs, we will be turning people away. The people in Temple Terrace that right now will not, some of them will not be receiving food from us, and that would be a shame, and we are all here, you know? Love is a verb. Love me, love is actions, and to love thy neighbor as thyself means that we need to help each other, especially in these times. Is it forever? No. But right now, people need food and don't have the resources, no matter who's at fault. I'm asking for anything the city council could do. St. Vincent de Paul has never come to you before, I do not believe directly, for any help, but any help you could give in any fashion will help your fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zelnowski.
My phone number is eight-one-three-five-three-four-eight-three-three-three. I am, I'm a humble volunteer at St. Vincent de Paul. St. Vincent de Paul is run exclusively by...
Mr. Zelnowski.
I'm sorry, by, by, by volunteers. Nobody gets a paycheck.
Mr. Loeb.
Charles Love, East Tampa Terrace Park. Tonight, first of all, I want to wish veterans Happy Veterans Day, and to keep warm, because the weather forecast is supposed to be pretty cold for Veterans Day. The other thing I want to talk about before I talk about healthcare costs is the library schedule, the library schedule of events coming up. The book sale is going to be the twenty, Thursday the twentieth to the twenty-second on Saturday, and, but also, they're collecting electronic recycle stuff on November fourteenth and November fifteenth all day. Now I want to talk briefly about healthcare costs. The situation was, my neighbor kind of challenged me by saying, "What is the difference between what we used to donate when we were young to what the younger people donate today?" Well, I told him there's two basic differences. Number one is the fact that it's disproportionately more. It's more of a burden, that for several reasons. First of all, that wellness programs take, take disproportionate amount of people that do sick care in the healthcare industry, which leads to the people that do healthcare into a lot of medical malpractice, number two, that there are fewer people putting into the system than are, than there used to be in relation to people getting out of the system. And finally, this is, the healthcare system is run, Medicare particularly is run as a healthcare, in the perspective of the healthcare people, as opposed to the perspective of the consumer, meaning that it's made as expensive as possible rather than as affordable as it should be. The other point that he made to me was, that I made to him was, that the younger people do not have the assurance that healthcare will be coming up when they get to be their age. So I brought, so he made, he made a point to me saying, an assumption, that, that the young people will get their money back. I am not so sure of that. I think it's about time we ask this question. What is going to happen to the healthcare money, the employers and the employees are, are being donated or being taken from your paycheck if the healthcare system should belly up? Is it going to be something like Chapter Seven? Is it going to be something like FDIC, or what? Our politicians need to answer this. I also wrote, "Tonight is nine and a quarter years since I turned sixty-five, and I've not used the Medicare system once. I absolutely hate it. I have never seen another country in the world have as much problems as we have with healthcare costs." I wrote up two pages on the back of some of the complaints that I have about it, and I don't even know that much about the system. But anyway, it's on public record, and if anybody wants to read it, I hope you do. And finally, I do support the last speaker, and I hope you do donate food for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Mr. Pogorlitch.
Thank you. David Pogorlitch, City of Temple Terrace. I'm here tonight to bring to your attention what appears, at least to me, to be kind of a disturbing trend. Let me, let me give you an example. So in various meetings, motions are made, which is nothing, there's nothing wrong with making motions. That's what you do. However, these motions, it's obvious, once the motion is made, that nobody on council, other than the person making the motion, has any interest in that motion. other than the person making the motion, has any interest in that motion. There's a long pause, longer than I have time to demonstrate, and just when you think that motion has died, which it probably should have, someone seconds it. A forty to ninety-minute discussion then ensues about why nobody's interested in the motion, that probably should have died. So, finally, there's a vote, and the vote is against the motion, many times with the person making the motion voting against the motion that was made. Aside from this being a colossal waste of time, it makes you, the council, look very unprofessional, which we know you're not, and quite frankly, it makes our city look silly. And lastly, I would remind you that it's not just me and other citizens watching you. There are other, our neighboring jurisdictions watch you, legislators watch you, and just, I would like you to just please keep that in mind as you conduct your, your business. Thank you.
Mr. Pogorlitch. Ms. Bezos. Good evening.
Hello. Margot Chavez, Temple Terrace resident. I live on three one three Bellevue Avenue, and we deal with quite a few power outages that happen in, during natural disasters like hurricanes, but also on just random Wednesdays for no reason. And we, a few neighbors, and have been talking on Fern Cliff, Bellevue, and some of the neighboring streets about how we're hoping that the city can maybe advocate on behalf of us south of Bullard, who seem to experience power outages maybe more frequently and for a longer period of time when they do happen. We're aware that TECO bears responsibility in managing and maintaining the infrastructure, but we also think the city may be able to do something to advocate on behalf of the residents to not only determine some of the root causes for why we experience so many outages, but also the, the impact, and come up with a timely solution to these sort of infrastructure issues. I've noticed that you all have spent a lot of the last few years upgrading and improving infrastructure around the city, engaging in really wonderful projects like the park, and that this year, especially after our hurricane season last year, you've been emphasizing disaster preparedness, and I think that looking at the infrastructure south of Bullard, the power infrastructure, is a really important part of that disaster preparedness. Last year, we had fourteen days without power, we were one of the last ones to get power, and the, one of the schools is, is on our streets, on the grid, so, please, anything that you can do to advocate to TECO, to try to understand what's going on and how we can make some improvements would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bezos. Ms. Turner. Ms. Turner.
Good evening, council members. Thank you so much for your time today, for all that you do for the city of Temple Terrace residents. My name's Katie Turner, and I'm a resident of Bellevue Avenue, Ms. Chavez is my neighbor. And as she spoke similarly, I'm here to ask for the city to advocate for power infrastructure for those living below south of Bullard, particularly on St. Augustine, Fern Cliff, and Bellevue. I've had the honor of living on both Fern Cliff and Bellevue in my time in Temple Terrace, and both streets unfortunately experienced similar power outages and delays. As Ms. Chavez mentioned, last Wednesday, there was a mild to moderate weather incident that occurred right around five o'clock. We then didn't have power for eight hours, and of course, these, these are very small problems in comparison to others, however, the frequency of the power outages can be very disruptive for us when it comes to work, school, maybe those who have medical issues at home. And again, during the hurricanes, we had a really significant loss of power. So, we would so appreciate if the city could possibly advocate, speak to TECO about perhaps looking at a study for a twenty-four to thirty-six month period, to perhaps compare power outages for those living south of Bullard to those north of Bullard, and then possibly some exploratory, exploratory practices on what are the differences in the infrastructure, and what could possibly be done to implement some improvements to our area. We're really proud to live in Temple Terrace, and we've got a wonderful community of residents living in those three streets. We speak to our friends all the time about how much we love our community, so anything we can continue to do to improve it, we would really appreciate your attention and your advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Ms. Tan. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Susan Tan. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to bring my concerns forward this evening. I live in Temple Terrace, zip code three three six one seven. I'm here to ask for specific, specific information on the Enigma Shopping Center, that's been an ongoing project in the neighborhood for years. It's of concern to myself and to the neighbors. We're looking for a potential completion date, there's concern that maybe there isn't financing available, that it can be completed because it has taken so long. We have an empty shopping center essentially, that is in our town, our city, that we think is not to our benefit. The second part of this is, what is the plan for the businesses that will come into this shopping center? Usually, when there's a shopping center going up, you hear news about what's coming to the future, there will be signs up, none of that has occurred. So, there are questions about the financing, the completion date, and the plans for the space. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. John Wilkinson? All right.
You're the first, no. Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for having me, and I'm glad to be here, and I've been here before and got something done, and maybe we can get it done again. Along those lines of what Ms. Tan had to say, there's talk of having, and it was in the Beacon and other discussions around town at the club and whatnot, about a pickleball complex that's going to come up. And if we can't put a shopping center together with financing, how in the world are we going to put a pick-up ball, pickleball facility together with goodness knows how much money that used to cost three hundred thousand and now will cost three million, or what now maybe will be three million, and when you guys get around to it, ten million? We can't afford these mistakes, these problems, these delays, and that's what we are concerned about here in Temple Terrace, and it's been going on for years. And I'm not blaming it on this council, I'm not blaming it on this mayor, I'm not blaming it on our lawyer, I'm just saying that we need to understand that other places have filled up all of their malls, other places have shopping centers that are bustling, and we have an area down in south of Bullard, and it just seems like we're left behind. I don't understand it, whether it comes to Fifty-Sixth Street, whether it comes to Bullard. Another issue is trash. I see trash everywhere, and I've been calling people in our city, and they tell me, well, Bullard has three people, three different organizations, state, county, and city. Well, we live here, okay? If county and the state aren't going to do anything about it, let us do something about it. Let's clean up our trash, people, and not just police the fact that it's happening, but make sure that we don't let it get out of control like we have. But I, I think the excuse of being three different partnerships, screw that, okay? Let's us do it, let's us clean up Bullard. Bullard is a disaster with trash. If you've been anywhere near the library, you've been anywhere near CVS, you've been anywhere near Walgreens, Publix, that whole area is so ugly with trash. And it reflects on our city, it reflects on ourselves, and I just think it's, it's a terrible thing that's happening, but the first thing is, is let's not spend money on a pickleball place, you can go anywhere and do that. We've got a rec center down here in Sly, there's a whole nother facility. I don't want to see that take ten years and then be told it's never going to happen. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Zimmerman.
My name's Troy Zimmerman, I'm also a resident of Temple Terrace, and my concern is also about the entrance of the city on the south side. It seemed like it's like overgrown with vines, I'm not sure if it's DOT area or whatever, but I think we need to get in there and like clean that whole entire thing up. The sign on the side needs work, that's really the only concern that I have right now.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, would you go check, double check and make sure I called everybody? Are there other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Chief, is there anybody in the lobby? Did I call everybody who filled out? Sure?
Got everybody. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment unless somebody else wants to talk. Okay. Next item of business is the consent, is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Shall we move?
Second.
I'm about to ask for a vote because it's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor, say aye. 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 Opposed? No nays. Consent agenda is adopted. Next, is a resolution approving school support committee grants, and our school support committee chair, Christina Paul, is here with us tonight to explain. Good evening, Ms. Paul.
Good evening, Mayor Ross, city council members. My name is Christina Paul, and I am the chair of the school support committee. We are a group of volunteers that provides support to teachers for innovative classroom and school-wide projects. These projects directly impact students from single classrooms to entire campuses, and each one helps meet an important need. The school support committee is inspired by our teachers who go above and beyond to find creative ways to support their students. Through these funds, we're proud to help make their idea a reality. For the 2025-2026 school year, the school support committee was focused on strengthening how we serve our schools. We've developed a clear mission statement and established eligibility criteria to ensure our efforts are transparent, in addition, updating the instructions and the grant form for more consistent process for both teachers and committee members. Moving forward, we plan to create a step-by-step instruction for how our rubric is applied, as well as a procedural guide to support future volunteers. With that being said, the school support committee reviewed and rated thirty-four grant applications. Based on the rating, the school support committee is recommending that the city council award grant funding to twenty-eight schools, or twenty-eight projects from ten Temple Terrace schools, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents. Thank you again for your continued support of our teachers, students, and the volunteers who make this possible.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Are there members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Ms. Paul, they might have some questions, don't quit you. Are there members of the public who wish to speak? Council member questions. Council member Fernandez.
So, I, I have a couple of questions. The first is for the timing, so are you able, because the budget, the new budget year doesn't start till October first.
Correct.
So, are you able to find out, like immediately when we pass, when we establish the budget, and then you send, you can send that out to the schools once you know that there is a budget for this? Is that the timing?
No, we, we go ahead and we send it out, and then if the budget change, were to change, then we would just grade accordingly.
Okay, and then, as far as the number of grants that you receive, I know it's different every year.
Yes.
But would you be able to come back to council, and I don't know if this happened this year or not, but I guess my concern is, I want to make sure that we have established a budget amount that's a meaningful amount, that does provide some funding for good projects and things like that, but I want to make sure that if, if there were a lot of projects that were coming to you, that the committee said, there were so many projects and we weren't able to fund them because this was the funding that was available to us, I just want to make sure that you all would be able to come back to us and report to council sometime during this year, because I want to make sure that when we are establishing what's available, if we're going to fund this area or not, that we're funding it appropriately.
Okay. We, we did have to turn some away, but that was mainly because of the criteria that we use to judge, they just didn't meet that.
Thank you.
Council member Kravitz.
I just have a brief question, and also, I'm very happy to see the schools getting support. This is a communication I had from a constituent, so I'm going to pass it along to you as a question because she wanted to know the answer to this.
Sure.
When we make a grant, in this instance, the library of, I think, an amount of two thousand dollars, are we influencing the selection of literature that the library will be able to acquire with that money?
A school library?
Yes.
Um, no, it just needs to be educational and meet the need that they're describing.
Thank you. That's all, I yield.
Any other questions? Council members, if there are no other questions, is there a motion?
Move to approve the selection of the school grants as presented. Second.
Motion is second. Discussion of the motion. Vice Mayor.
More comment on it, thank you. Ms. Paul, I know what you guys go through for this, I helped write these policies years ago, and I just want to thank you and, and the entire school support committee, it takes a lot of effort, I, you could spend hours and hours and hours going through these by yourselves, and then, and then in session, so I just want to thank you for all that you guys do for the, for the schools, and it's, it does not go unnoticed, let's put it that way.
Council member Chambers.
Thank you. As a liaison to this group, I can tell you how much, how hard they work, and the, the last meeting they had to review the grants went almost three hours, and the items you addressed, council member, they've discussed that, so they, they do know that if there's, if they need more money, they could come back, they know also it's not a guarantee, but those items have been discussed, but they work real hard, so thank you very much to you and your group.
Okay, any other discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. 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 Opposed? No nays. Resolution is adopted, thank you, Ms. Paul. Next item is a resolution approving the implementation services and purchasing agreement with BSNA Software for the implementation of an enterprise resource planning, or ERP system. Our municipal systems analyst, Sarah Sanchez Borda, is here to present. Good evening, long time coming.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. Thank you for your time, thank you for having me here. I am here to present and to seek authorization to sign a contract with BSNA for the licenses and for the ERP implementation. ERP stands for enterprise resource planning, specifically enterprise for the finance aspects of the organization, resource, human resources, and planning budget. So, all this started when we tried to enhance our processes in the organization with the current system that we have, which is central square, and we were unsuccessful. So, in fiscal year 2025, from capital improvement budget, there was an allocation of two million dollars for the ERP modernization. The contract with BSNA came to a total of four hundred twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, and there were needs that were identified during this process, and that we are going to use the remaining funds to implement those needs that were identified in different areas, such as human resources systems, planning review tools, and code compliance software. So, this was a process that took from, input from all different departments, so we formed some work groups from all different departments, and we conduct some interviews to analyze how is the process relate with the systems, and to identify the business needs that each department has, that helped us to develop a requirement list, which then we implement the requirement list into the RFP that was released. Also, during the interview process, we came up with a selection committee that was formed from different departments, and that committee was the one that participated in evaluating the proposals and in the demo phase. The RFP was released in April seventeen, 2025, we received eleven proposals, we received them by May twenty-three, 2025. Then, we scored the proposals in different aspects, but the three aspects that Then we scored the proposals in different aspects, but the three aspects that I would like to mention are the requirement list that I just mentioned previously, the implementation, the implementation and data conversion support that we get from the vendors. And the community evaluate these vendors, so we got the scores that are showing in the presentation. The three highest scores, which is BSNA, Oracle, and Edmunds, they moved to the demo phase, which was conducted online. We needed some scripts that were provided to the vendor to make sure that all the functionalities of the systems were going to be presented to us and that way we could evaluate the systems in the same format. The one who scored the highest was BSNA. And BSNA moved to the discovery phase, which was where we create a statement of work, which is a very detailed document where we talk about the implementation process, data conversion process, and also the expectations that we have from the vendor and the vendor has from the city, the same as the responsibilities. During this process, this statement of work took three rounds of negotiations. In those rounds of negotiations, we agree to include the pilot phase, was one of the biggest needs the city wanted to have, and they were willing to accept that. So we are going to include a pilot phase, which is going to allow us to test all of our processes in a sandbox with real data. And then we can make sure that everything is ready prior to deploy phase. Also, we decided we are going to roll out these two modules rather than everything at once, so we're going to roll out these finance first and utility billing. I'm not saying that we're going to complete 100% one phase. We're just going to roll out in phases to make sure that we have stability before we roll out the other one. And then the last thing that we agree with the vendor is to make sure that we have milestones with deliverables and that departments can sign off on them before we move to the next phase. So BSNA was the one that covered the most or the best, all the requirements that were listed in the RFP, that included a fully integrated system that includes finance, community development, and utility billing. Also, they have a strong support when it comes down to discovery phase, to the implementation and data conversion, and they have experience with different municipalities. One key point for BSNA was they are open to integrate with other systems. So when we recognize that there is a need to implement other systems in other areas, we have the access to create the integration with the systems, which we are going to create their own procurement process for the systems that I mentioned before, in human resources, planning review tool, and code compliance. And now I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Councilmember questions? Council Vice Mayor?
Yes. First of all, how many modifications were going to be required to, from the basic vanilla package in order to accommodate what we need? Are there many?
No, we will like to keep it in a way that, keep it as the box come and more we adapt the process to add the best practice that our, all our municipalities can.
Okay, good.
And have.
And how long do you think conversion is going to take for work? Because I know what we've got is some really piecemeal stuff and I know they've kept it together with baling wire and Band-Aids and paper clips. So how long do you expect the conversion to take?
The data conversion, we're expecting to take three to five months. And we are going to do multiple data conversions.
And how many people you got helping you with this, with this implementation? This is a big deal. I've, I've seen these go bad and when they go bad, they're hard to recover from. That's all.
So we have people involved from all different departments. So we have subject matter experts from all the different departments and we also have the directors who are involved in it. And we have great support from IT and finance. So all of the departments are putting some of it and me, I am part of team. And then we have some interns who are helping.
So finance will go first?
Finance will go first and utility billing will be very close too, because utility billing will impact a lot of the GLs.
Okay. And then last is what's the plan to go live? Any, any guess at this point?
Yes, we are planning to go live in October 1st next year.
Next year, okay.
Yes.
You've given yourself plenty of time to do it the right way. That's, that's, I'm very, I'm very glad that we're getting this far. And I like the fact that the, the additional modules are going to be smoothly integrated. So that's going to be good. Good. You guys did a good job with this. Thank you.
Question?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
So I want to ask you about the cost. This, is this the ongoing annual cost or will the ongoing subscription be different? This is just the initial payment for getting started with the system?
Yes, this is the initial payment to start with the system. The ongoing payment will be $88,000, $88,330.
Okay, and then one of the issues that we have been struggling with is our document retention system, which to, to help navigate all of the various documents that any department might need to provide to the public. How is this system going to help us with that area?
So the system will allow us to do the process more efficiency, with more efficiency. Therefore, we are expecting that we can integrate with the document management system. So that's, that's how we can impact that area.
Okay. So this might be a question for staff that, because one of the things that we talked about during our planning was about how to improve our document management system for the city clerk's office, but how that would integrate with the rest of the city. So will the city clerk's office need some kind of different software? Or will just going with this enterprise system in and of itself create the document management system that we need?
Mayor and council?
Yeah.
So the, it won't create the document management system. I think what, what Sarah was trying to explain was that today our ERP system is, is very cumbersome. It's, it doesn't work very well at all. And so it, it takes an enormous amount of effort to get basic information. And so we feel that with this new system, we'll be able to get the basic financial information, other, other reports that are tied into the module she noted here, much, much quicker. And that will allow for, when we do have the document management system in place, either the current one improved or a new one, that it'll tie in, integrate better so that we can provide a quicker return when people ask for documents, whether they be internal or external.
Okay. Thank you.
I got a couple of questions, Ms. Borda. So there's a couple of modules that aren't included here that you mentioned, HR, code compliance, and plant, is it permit reviews?
Very clearly.
Okay.
But it's the planning review tool.
Planning review, okay. So we talked to the vendor about potential ways, so do we, are we comfortable that we're not going to go get something to do what we need done in HR that's not going to talk to BSNA? How are we confident? Have we looked ahead at that to, to make sure that whatever we get for these modules for the departments that aren't covered under this will work? Or we, I just want to make sure we're not building another system of the future that's what we have today. It's just we're buying a new one. So how, how will that work?
So when we write the RFPs, the request for proposal for the systems, one of the list of the requirements will be that the new system will be able to integrate with BSNA. Since we already have the BSNA as an open application that can integrate, we just need to make sure that the other system that we go to choose is able to talk back.
Do we know that that exists?
Yes.
There are?
Yes, we have talked to BSNA a couple of times and we have actually asked BSNA to provide a list of vendors that they have worked in the past with it.
Okay.
With them. So yeah, we are, we are looking at options that they recommend and they still will meet the needs of the city.
Okay, so we do know that exists. We don't, okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know. Okay. Other questions? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve the implementation services and purchases agreement with BSNA software for the implementation of an ERP system.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there a discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Opposed, no nays. Resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution approving the purchase of two Thunder Creek fuel and lube trailers totaling $74,583.48 from Florida Contracts Company utilizing General Services Administration Contract Number GS-03F-113DA. And our Public Works Director Jason Warrenfield is here to explain.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The item before you this evening is a resolution authorizing the purchase of two Thunder Creek fuel and lube trailers for the City Public Works Department. These trailers will be utilized by the Fleet and Utilities Division to support field operations, providing on-site fueling for city generators and other diesel-powered equipment. This capability will enhance efficiency, reduce equipment downtime, and support continued delivery of essential public services during both blue and gray skies. These trailers are designed and rated to be operated without a CDL. These units will have a solar, solar charging system for battery maintenance along with LED floodlights for safer nighttime operation. The purchase will be made through the Florida Contract Company using the General Services Administration Contract mentioned in the resolution, which ensures the city is receiving competitive and pre-negotiated pricing terms. The total cost for both trailers is $74,583.48. Funded, funding for this purchase will come from the unassigned general fund balance. Staff recommends approval for this resolution authorizing the purchase and associated payment. And I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Warrenfield. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers, other questions?
I just have one.
Councilmember Fernandez?
And this is just for the public's information, but can you confirm that this is an item that was part of the budget that we passed to start October 1st?
May I?
City Manager?
So actually, this was not part of the, the budget. If you recall, during the budget workshop over the summer, council and staff had a discussion about certain items that were included in the legislative approval. And then the governor vetoed that approval and so we had the conversation about, you know, let's just go ahead and move and get these items and use unassigned fund balance to do that. We managed to get the sandbag machine in an expedited timeframe. We can get a chance to pull off, to pull the trigger on the, the fuel trailers that come out. So this is actually being funded through unassigned fund balance, which was the original direction. But just want to make that clear. It's not in the FYI 26 budget.
Okay. No, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Warrenfield. Is there a motion?
Move to approve resolution approving the purchase of two Thunder Creek fuel and lube trailers totaling $74,583.48 from Florida Contracts Company utilizing a General Services Administration Contract Number GS-03F-113DA to be paid for out of unassigned fund balance.
Second.
I think Councilmember Kravitz had the second. Is there a discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no nays. Next item, Councilmember Kravitz, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but was it your desire that this item be pulled from the agenda? And if so, if you'd like to make a motion to that effect, it's up to you.
Yes, so my, my protest was filed, pursued to Rule 20. It's the fourth protest. This is the first protest that's ever made it onto the agenda and I don't know why it's there. The record is the record and by filing the protest, I put it in the record. I don't require any sort of discussion on it and we have a lot of other important issues. So I've moved to table this agenda item.
Oh. Just a clarification. What do you mean by table?
Table means it's gone. It's, it's removed indefinitely unless someone up here for whatever obscure reason wants to make a motion to take it up from the table at some later day, which I wouldn't recommend.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
Discussion of the motion?
Table, he meant we bring it up again some other time.
That's if you do it to a definite date.
Pardon me?
If you do it to a definite date, that's true.
We're gonna do it definite, just remove it completely.
That is what I'm proposing. If, if I say I table it for the next meeting or I table it six months from now, then it comes back. If you just table it, it's gone. You have to take it up from the table, which requires a motion. Okay.
Mr. Mueller?
Yeah, it can sit on that table forever and then it'll not be pulled, you know, someone would have to pull it off.
Microphone. Sorry, Brian.
There's no motion anyway. I don't know even what we're discussing, so.
I'm just saying, you know, yeah, if it's tabled and it doesn't get pulled from the table, it'll just stay there. I mean, I don't know if you, it sounds like what you're actually wishing to do is withdraw it, but.
I didn't put it on here. I can't withdraw it. I don't even know who put it on here. I can't withdraw it. I didn't put it on there. I don't like this. I don't want it there anyway. So get rid of it. Whoever put it on there, make the motion.
City Manager?
So I, I'm the one to put this on the agenda and I.
Withdraw it then.
Whatever process the council feels, if we table it, my question would be, does it mean that it appears on the agendas in perpetuity or do we not put it on future, like?
I don't believe it'll, it just gets tabled and that's it. It comes off of the agenda. It won't be on future agendas.
Whichever process council wishes to pursue, I think it's indifferent to.
So I have a motion to table on the table. Would anyone like to second it?
I did. I seconded it.
Okay.
Did you have something, Councilmember?
Yeah, I, I'm uncomfortable with the table word. I, I would like to see the word withdraw from that first. And if you don't want to do that, I can make the motion to withdraw it. I don't think whoever put it on there can.
May I?
City Manager?
Okay, if it will help the discussion, I'm willing to remove it. Apparently, the city attorney is saying that that's the proper thing. I can remove it from the agenda. Happy to do that.
Okay, Mr. Mueller, walk me through this because we have a live motion and now we have a.
I'm happy to withdraw the motion if the person, if the person who put this on the agenda is now going to withdraw it from the agenda.
Okay, so you're withdrawing the motion if?
It is withdrawn, yeah.
Okay, and you're going to remove it from the agenda?
Fantastic.
And that's kosher, Mr. Mueller?
I'm not seeing any issue with it. I mean, it's being taken off the agenda. That's what we're looking to do.
Okay.
So let's remove it from the agenda.
Okay, very good. Thank you. New business and board reports. Is there any new business become before the council? Councilmember Fernandez?
Well, I don't know if this is the right timing, but last night we had a discussion, we had a meeting where we discussed the results of the tree survey and the report that the consultants are putting together about the management and et cetera. When, when do, when this is final and they bring this to us, will the public have a chance to, when, when will it be is really my question?
If I could ask Mr. Paulie to probably give you the more specific answer.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Greg Pauli, Director of Community Development. In response to the question regarding the current tree work that's being conducted, it's my understanding that they have approximately four to six weeks of work remaining that they have to wrap up and a good portion of that is finishing the last details of the canopy study as well as preparing the comprehensive maintenance plan for the urban forest. At that time, it will come to us in draft form. We'll review it with staff to make sure that it satisfies all of the objectives of the predefined goals and then we will package that and bring that before council for final acceptance.
Okay, so probably it would come before council sometime at one of our January meetings?
Most likely.
Okay. And can I ask, I know we advertise our, our meetings and such, but sometimes people don't always look at the agenda. So I know this seemed to be an issue that a lot of members of the community were very interested in. So if there's a way to just highlight the tree program that we'll be discussing, if that's possible?
If, if the city manager will allow me, I'll be happy to work directly with our marketing team. They were extremely helpful in promoting the meeting that you mentioned from last evening and I'm sure that we would be able to reach out and get that same level of assistance for round two, if you will.
That's it.
Other new business? Councilmember Chambers?
Yes, a question first to the city manager. Is anyone from your staff gonna talk about Saturday night's event? Because I can't if they're not. Okay. Okay, remind everybody this weekend, Woodmont Park is 52nd Annual Arts Festival, 10 to 4 each day. On Saturday at 11 o'clock is the Veterans Day Celebration. And for the Centennial Committee, it's in conjunction with the Arts Festival but run by the city at 6:30 Saturday night is a concert on the first fairway. So right next to the Art Festival, it's from 6:30, 8:30. So right next to the Art Festival, it's from 6:30, 8:30 will be two bands playing. Dan Moody Band, and I don't know, I don't remember the other one, but they're both local bands. So bring your lawn chair or blanket, come out. The food trucks from the Art Festival will stay there, so you can have dinner at the food trucks and then listen to some nice music under the stars. And that's Saturday, and then Sunday concludes the Arts Festival.
And if you guys don't know the Dan Moody Band, he's a, he's a, he's a, you're going to want to see that. He's a, he's a really good guy, so. Vice mayor.
I've got two quick things, and I don't know whether this is appropriate time or not, but Mr. Baye, would it be possible to have, given the questions we had tonight regarding Enigma and the upgrade, we have a CRA meeting on the 18th, if I'm not mistaken. Will we, is it possible to have an update on those?
I can give you an update this evening.
Okay, you'll be prepared. Okay, that's fine. Okay. And then the other, the other thing is, and it's just a comment, kudos to all the staff and leisure services for the Fall Festival. It was, it was packed. You guys did a great job, and everybody that participated through the whole evening. Thank you.
New business? Councilmember Kravitz.
Got a couple items. So first of all, really appreciate the memo you sent around. It was well structured, succinct, and very informative about the short-term rentals, so really appreciate that. It made me consider what we could do about this topic. We've heard a lot of people come in here and complain about short-term rentals. It's a thorn in the side of many neighborhoods because of the burden that they pose for traffic and also for noise in a residential area. And I think we should do what we can to, we obviously can't regulate them, but we know that there's a scope that we can use to address them, and I think we should use that scope. So what I wanted to do is make a motion to start drafting an ordinance, and I'm not making the motion yet. I'm just going to describe what goes in it, because I'm taking the public comment to heart. I'm not just going to make motions, I'm going to discuss them first. So let's see how that goes. I think it would be great if we could define and classify short-term rentals as a distinct land use, i.e. as commercial, which they are. And I think that we should include in that legislative draft that they should be assessed as commercial properties and that they should be treated as commercial properties for enforcement. So that would relate to both code enforcement and, of course, Temple Terrace Fire Department inspections. And I think that we should have a registration and permit framework for these short-term rentals so that they can comply with our building code, our fire prevention code standards in a way that's consistent with the Florida statute, which our city attorney outlined. And I think that when we have a permit and registration framework, one of the really important things that we can then do is charge short-term rentals a fee for that registration, and I think that would be important to do as well. So I'm curious if anyone has any thoughts on that.
Can I, I'm sorry.
City manager.
Before we move too far along, so as we've informed the council, we actually have an ordinance that's being drafted right now. I think, council member, to address most of your issues, I can tell you the one, the one piece that, the assessment piece, I think the West Manatee Fire District assess a fee because they're a district that probably has the ability to assess a fee here. The notion of making them commercial property, and that's through the property appraiser and that, so I don't think that's currently contemplated in the draft ordinance we have. But the ordinance should be coming to you probably by the first meeting in December, is our goal to get it to you for your first reading.
Okay, excellent. That's wonderful. Happy to hear that.
Can I also chime in real quick?
City attorney.
Few of the things you did suggest would probably get into the area of where we would be preempted. So we'll have to be real careful on registration systems and collection of any fees and anything that looks like we're regulating them. Like I said, my memo talked about the building code and the fire code are definite ones we can go with.
Yeah.
But I just want you to be wary that the things you're asking for may put us into the area that we're preempted on. So we got to just be careful.
As always, my suggestions rely on the people who are doing the execution of the thing that we decide, to consider all of those nuances and find the best path through whatever obstacles there may be. And obviously, it's not my position or prerogative to know all of those or take them all into account. That's why there's a separation of powers in government. So I appreciate that, but again, I trust all of you to go and find those problems and address them appropriately. And I look forward to seeing the draft ordinance. It's going to be really exciting. I think it's going to be important to a lot of people. While I have the floor, I have one more item that I'd like to bring up. Regarding PFAS, I believe we had a memorandum that we were expecting, let me just go ahead and find that, from the legal department, and I was wondering how far along we were on that. We passed a motion on that on, I believe, the 15th of July.
I've obviously forgotten what that was.
Okay. I have the minutes here, so I'll just read it. Councilmember Kravitz would like to make a motion to direct the city attorney to provide a written memorandum on the state of the PFAS litigation and the activities of the outside council that we've engaged on the water quality issue, passed 4-0. And I'm wondering if there's been any progress on reporting on the PFAS litigation?
I believe I submitted that memorandum.
Okay, so where are we at with the litigation, then?
Right now?
Yeah.
We are still in, we're doing the testing for the, which ones is it? We have the two right now that are going on, I forget which two they are, that we're in settlement mode on. Then there's the several other ones that are, we have deadlines will be coming up in the next year or so. So we, right now, we're in settlement mode on those. I believe it's been the intent of council, I'm not sure, to move to litigation mode on those, and I would just be filling out a new contract on that with outside counsel to go into litigation mode, if that's the way city council would like to move forward.
And if we get a substantive update, will that be shared?
Yes, if there's something to update, and I believe there's, you mean, just on the legal aspect? Yeah, I'll certainly report back when we go into litigation mode on them.
Remaining with the PFAS topic briefly, city manager, appreciate the estimate that was provided for connection to Hillsborough County between 25.7 and 35.8 million. I noted that that was Hillsborough County and not City of Tampa water, so I had a question on that. Hillsborough County, as far as I'm aware, doesn't have a filter solution like City of Tampa does?
Yeah.
City manager.
So the, the, City Tampa doesn't have a filtration solution yet either. They're working, City Tampa's working on a filtration solution. They've estimated, last time we talked to them, that it was going to be about 200 million, and they'd probably be hard-pressed to meet the 2031 date. They're trying to meet that date, just like we're trying to meet that date. Hillsborough County buys their water from Tampa Bay Water, and Tampa Bay Water is also trying to get a filtration system to meet the EPA regulations for 2031. So the notion, the notion about trying to look at these regional systems would be, rather than all of us trying to get our own filtration systems, could we just partner, in essence, and buy bulk water? That's one possible alternative. However, I will state that the costs to connect to those utilities are far more than I think any of us anticipated. So we're looking at another alternative, which would be, in terms of emergency redundancy, perhaps us building or purchasing a new storage tank would address the redundancy issues, would address the PFAS necessarily, we'd still have to do our own filtration, but we're looking at all of these options and looking at the cost benefits for all of these options to make the best recommendation possible to the city council.
Okay, so that's interesting. I know that Tampa has a filter prototype that they're using for part of their water systems. It seems like they're a little further along, but perhaps I'm on the wrong track with that. The other point that I'd like to raise is whether we can expect an offer or a quote from the City of Tampa, as we've received from Hillsborough County regarding connection to their system potentially, and when that might occur.
They gave us that quote, I included it in the council update from weeks ago.
Good, okay. Thanks. That's great. Wonderful. So there have been substantive updates since we discussed the PFAS Town Hall?
Yes, sir. Every week in your council update, I've been including a PFAS update.
I just, I just have it rattling around in my head that we were going to have the virtual town hall and we had a substantive update to share, but it sounds like we've had two of them, then.
Well, we discussed this at the last meeting, was the, when we have the information from the CHA and the pilot and the CHA plan, the goal would be to have the town halls.
That's fine. I just have one more question regarding the installation of the trashcans in downtown Temple Terrace. It was suggested at one point, emailed me, that they were all going to be installed October 17th. I'm assuming that's happened.
Yes, they were installed.
Excellent, great. And regarding Blazing Paddles, have we received anything else from them?
No, the broker has reached out to them, and Mr. Polly, do you have any updates at this point? So the broker should have communicated the, basically, the feedback from our financial, sort of forensic accountant that looked at their business plan. If we don't receive any, word back from them, and probably by the end of, is there, what was the deadline? Come on up, Mr. Polly.
Working through our broker, we asked them to respond to the financial audit report and submit any new information or edits or changes they wish to submit in time to get it on the, I believe it's the December 3rd, I think that's the first meeting in December, is what we asked them to do. So we, obviously, we asked for that information to be delivered to us approximately 14 days before then. And as of today, I have not heard from them, although I did get a message from the broker earlier today requesting a meeting tomorrow. Thank you.
I just have one or two more items to get through here. So, yeah, Sunnyside Traffic, Sunnyside Road Traffic Calling, is there any update on that? I was asked to follow up on that by a constituent, and I'm curious if there's been any more reports from-
I don't think we have an update right now, but I can get you something for the next meeting.
Okay, that would be very nice. Thank you. And regarding the half design for Riverside Park, I'm curious whether they have taken the public feedback into account, or whether they're just going to abandon that intention and provide the same design for our park workshop. Where are we on that?
Sure. And I think, as we talked about previously, so the half, I'm going to circulate the half design to the entire city council probably by week's end or early next week. The design is, is not necessarily, has not changed dramatically. That's the reason we're trying to have the workshops, so the council, you as the elected officials can take the public feedback and working with the consultants and come up with the plan the way you want to see the plan moving forward, conscious also of the budgets and the numbers that are associated with it.
Yeah. Final comment before I yield. I'm not going to make a motion on this, but I think it would be wise to drop the price of the property at 8901 Bertha Palmer to the highest current offer that we have, which is 1.4 million from Blazing Saddles. The reason why I think it would be wise to do that is because we've been waiting some time for them to provide us with any additional information. They have not done so. I think that if we lowered the price to 1.4 million, which is what we have tentatively agreed with them, then we're signaling to the market that we're willing to offer the other people who might be interested in this property, and I'm sure they're out there, the same price. And you'll see who's interested at 1.4 million and not at 2 million, which is what we have it listed at now, and you might get much higher quality offers. I think this would be a really smart move, because right now, the only person who knows, at least if you're not following along on TV or reading the minutes, that we're willing to offer it at 1.4 million would be people who are looking at what we're doing up here. Publicly, we're still signaling to everyone on the market that we want 2 million, and that might be too much of a burden for an investor to come in. So I'd be very curious to see whether we get more fish biting if we lowered the price to the price that we're offering Blazing Saddles. I think it'd be really smart to do that, and, you know, maybe someone will make a motion on that someday, and then we can see. So, and with that, I yield the floor.
Other new business?
Quick question for the city attorney, just to check my, make sure I'm interpreting your memo correctly about the Manatee Fire and the short-term rentals. I think I got it, but I want to make sure I have it right. Looks to me like Manatee Fire has a fire assessment fee. We don't have that. It looks to me like they have a fire fee and that what they did was assess the short-term rentals according to the commercial schedule of the fee as opposed to the residential. Is that correct?
Correct, and that was done pursuant to a state statute.
Okay, so we don't have a fire fee in Temple Terrace, so there wouldn't be any mechanism for us to, I mean, we can't rezone them commercial because they, I mean, there wouldn't, that mechanism that they used, we don't have. We don't have a fire fee.
Correct. We wouldn't be able to assess them. That was an assessment that was authorized by the state legislature. We don't have that type of authorization.
We don't have the fire fee.
Correct, and we don't, and they are, and the zoning, again, it wasn't, they didn't assess pursuant, they were able to assess pursuant to the use, not the land zoning. We're going to be stuck with the land zoning by and large.
So are there other city fees that we do have that could be applied at a commercial rate as opposed to, do we have the equivalent of that? I know we don't have a fire fee, but do we have, like, would, I don't know, would permits be higher if it were a commercial? I don't know.
I'm not, I would have to defer to the staff.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure I understood the case correctly.
Right, yeah, I mean, again, that was, because that's who provided the fire to them, was the West Manatee Fire District. They had, you know, that's, in order to be able to provide the services, they had to assess, you know, do a fire assessment.
Thank you. Other new business, board reports? Councilmembers, I have erred human again. We discussed council business, carryover council business. We had an agenda item that we had extensive discussion on, but I neglected to ask you if there were other carryover council business items. We just moved on to new business. So are there other carryover council business items? Okay. We've already done new business and board reports. Anything more on that? City managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just first, just in the backup this evening, you'll have the quarterly reports that we include every three months. Also, several meetings ago, I believe it was Councilmember Fernandez and with the supportive council had asked for us to explore a social media policy for city council members. I've included that social media policy. It's a draft right now on the agenda, just if you'll allow me, just a few highlights of the policy. Basically, we have different platforms that we use for social media. What we were suggesting, because it's something I think we're most comfortable with and allow us sort of an entry point here into this new framework, would be to, if the council wishes to establish city Facebook pages for the council members, the marketing and communications officer, Ms. Rodriguez, would be the administrator of those social media accounts. We have established in the draft of policy several sort of disclaimers that this would all be public. It's subject to Florida Public Records Law, subject to Florida Sunshine Law. So for example, friends and followers of those pages would be subject to disclosure, those lists would be subject to disclosure. We've also made sure that to make very visible to the council members who wish to pursue this, that according to Florida Sunshine Law, you can't engage on the city's social media page in an exchange or discussion of matters that foreseeably could come before the city council or board or committee of the city. In terms of control, what typically will come up a lot of times is discussion about posts. If somebody writes something on these pages, you know, is there anything the city can do about it? For the most part, there is rather wide berth given to these posts. Council members, basically, you'd have the option, can't really selectively, you know, pick, like, okay, I want to hear from this person, not that person, but you could turn off all the comments, which would probably defeat the purpose that you're looking to do these pages. But there are several restrictions that are allowed under case law. For example, if comments are off-subject or out of context, if they can contain obscenities or personally identify information or threatening or promote violence or incite violence or promote commercial products or promote or endorse political campaigns or candidates, things like that, those you could, you could, you could block. When I say block, what would happen, what we're proposing here is that if you saw that on the page, you'd notify the marketing officer, and she might have noticed it before you, for example, and then if it meets this criteria, she would be able to basically hide those comments. They'd still be archived because it's still a public record, but they'd be hidden from the public's view, which is, which is allowable. There's also certain prohibitions, as I just kind of alluded to, on campaigning. You couldn't use this for your campaigns, for example. And there's also provision here to appeal any decision, for example, if there's a discrepancy or dispute between the council members' interpretation of what may be a comment that should be restricted or not restricted, and staff's interpretation. I've outlined here in an appeal process for that, which ultimately, if you follow the appeal all the way to the top, it would come back to the city council for your, your decision. If you, if you like this, this draft policy, what will- If you, if you like this, this draft policy, what we'll do is we'll, we'll create a resolution and put it on the next agenda for your adoption, or if you wish to change things, obviously, give us that direction.
Counsel, what you wish? Your idea?
Okay. I, I would like to have us establish a policy, because I think while maybe a lot of people at this council right now might not want to use it, as we go into the future, more and more members of the public engage on social media, so I think having, having a policy in place prior to needing to use it is important. Secondly, so, but I, I do have a question about, so, what typically happens is, and I'll, I'll use myself as the example, you know, I read a comment on Facebook, and the information may have a question, or it may just be incorrect information, and I don't answer it, obviously, because it's my personal Facebook, so the only thing that I do, somebody had a question about the budget, I sent them the link to the city's budget, I didn't make any comments about answering the question. Or I answer the question saying, "Contact me directly so we can discuss it," or I put, I put, I, you know, put on there, "Please watch the council meeting, I think your questions will be answered." That's, that's the, the gist of what, how I would respond. If we had a city council Facebook page, how would that change how I'm able to respond? Would I actually be able to answer a constituent question, or would that be considered engaging? Like, I understand if we all had one, I couldn't go on any of theirs, any of their comments and comment, that would be a violation of the Sunshine Law. But if it's just me interacting with a constituent, you know, how does that change from what I do right now on my, through my personal one?
Me or you?
You want to start?
Sure, so, and the city attorney can correct me if I say something that's not correct here, but I would think, for example, if, if, if a constituent resident, whoever is on your page, if they ask you a question, a factual question about something that's been discussed here, like, hey, the budget question, if they say, "Hey, can you tell me how much is proposed for this in, in the, in the current budget or in the proposed budget?" I think answering that would be fine and not run afoul of any of these issues. If they ask you, "How are you gonna vote on this matter?", or you express the opinion of how you're gonna vote on something that's gonna come before the council, that's probably a problem.
It is.
It is a problem, so, so, that's, and I'm sure, and I'm sure there's probably a dozen other scenarios that could come up. So, it'll, it'll take some, it'll definitely take some effort on whoever, whoever chooses to have this page, will take some effort to just make sure that you're, you know, you always keep, you're conscious of that to avoid getting into trouble.
And then another question for you is, I know that Hillsborough County School District, the school board members do have Facebook pages, and I believe Hillsborough County commissioners as well, do they already have a social media policy in existence that they're operating from, that we know is, that's been tried and, and is in operation right now, that we could make whatever components of their policy and basically adapt them to ours? I don't have anything against this policy in front of me, I'm just, those, I know that they're in operation right now.
So, so we didn't look at the, the county's social media policy? We can do that, certainly, and we can see if there's any differences between, or significant, I imagine there are differences, but significant differences between theirs and ours, and we can consider redoing this draft, if you'd like us to do that, incorporating some of those differences. Again, I don't know what those differences might be at this point, so I'm just speculating.
I mean, I, my only, I'm only asking because I know that they use this currently. They, the couns, the commissioners and the school board members use social media, so they must have some sort of infrastructure in place, because I haven't seen any of them getting in trouble yet for violating any Sunshine Law or... So, anyway, that, that's just my thought, but I do think that we should have a policy in place.
I'm okay with it. If you want it Facebook, that's fine. You okay with?
I think we probably should have a policy, and I'll state I'm not gonna do any Facebook.
I'm not either, but, I mean, it's, lots of other cities do.
And I don't know, and I think Tampa may have one, too.
Lots of cities do.
A lot of cities do, but I never really see them answering questions, I see them posting things, so I don't, I, I would be very concerned about questions coming in that someone, one of us answers back, and it may not be on the agenda now, but it may be something in the future. So, it's, that's why I wouldn't do it, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with, you guys, what do you think? Want them to bring it back in a resolution, or?
Might as well, but I'd like, before you do that, though, I'd like to compare it against the county, if we could, just to see if there's anything missing that could tighten it up a little bit, because it's a slippery slope, and once we, it only takes one mistake, that we got ourselves, we could potentially have ourselves a, a problem, that we don't, that's self-created and not necessary, those are the ones usually hurt the worst.
Councilmember Kravitz? Have any thoughts on this?
You want to hear my thoughts? That's fine, I think, I think we could compare it with the city of Tampa as well, I know that they have a lot of people who are on Facebook all the time. Maybe it's possible to simply copy and paste their policy, since it seems to work pretty well. I don't think it's secret, we could probably just ask them for it or find it online, I don't know. So, that's my thought on that, and the only other thought I have on this is the process by which people post. I believe when I read it, it stood out to me that you have to submit your post to the social media department, correct me if I'm wrong, so somebody, somebody gets the post, and then they approve it and put it on for you, or how does that work?
Yes, sir, no, no, that's, that, no, that's not the way it's drafted right now. You're able to post, the, the, the marketing communications officer just basically helps set up your account, sets up the page for you, puts the disclaimer on the page. If there's an issue with the posts, for example, somebody puts a post that might be obscenity-laden or something like that, they might, they might pull those posts off, still archive them, but they might, might do that, but they're not, we're not censoring the council members' posts.
I wasn't suggesting censorship, I was just addressing the process of posting. I'll, I'll read the text again, it's possible I don't remember, and, and, you know, what you, so you'd be on your account, in other words, and you'd be typing your own response and hitting enter, is that?
Correct.
That's how it's intended?
If any council member wanted to do this, we'd set up the page for you. The administration of the page, in the sense of just the settings and that stuff, would be controlled by the, the marketing communications officer, but you'd be posting, it'd be your councilmember Kravitz's city social media page, for example. So, you'd post, you'd respond, however you'd like to do that.
That's fine, I, I have to read it again, then, I was obviously pulled in a thousand directions, so sometimes when something is not super high on my list of priorities, it doesn't get the level of detail that it should. So, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing, Mr. B., is to move forward, check with Tampa, check with the county, give us a draft of a policy for, and a resolution for our adoption. Did I summarize that correctly?
Agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, the question was raised in the public comment, and I'm grateful that the folks are still here about the Enigma Plaza, so I do have an update on Enigma. So, first of all, let me just clarify, because I think that there's a little misunderstanding out there, the Enigma Plaza is not a city project, it's private property, it has not been city property for many years now at this point. It's a private developer that's developing commercial property. He has several active permits, there are several tenants that have applied, applied for sub-permits, basically for tenant fit-up, including he had a barber shop, a restaurant, actually, there's three restaurants here, so he had a barber shop, three restaurants, a nail salon, a foot massage establishment, and a coffee shop. So, those permits are, are active. We understand that the tenant for, the barber shop tenant has pulled out, and the other permits are still active. So, that's the project. Now, in terms of when they're gonna complete the project, this is a question that we've had honestly ourselves with, with the developer, and we've asked the developer multiple times, the developer has given every single member of staff here who's had interaction with him, different dates over the last several years, when he anticipates that the project will be concluded. Thus far, he has not been able to hit any of those dates. I don't have any information and or knowledge of his personal private financing for the project. Again, it's not a public project, it's a private project, so we're not aware of how he's financing it at this point. But he definitely has taken a very long time to get this project going. If you, if you visit the project and you actually get a up-close look at it, it's, it's done well, and project is, is pretty high-quality, it's just, it's very, very slow. And, you know, but he does have active permits for his tenants, hopefully these tenants and these permits will, will come to fruition, and he'll be able to get tenants into the building. But that's, that's the latest as we, as of this afternoon.
Mr. B., would you, since, since our folks have been patiently waiting, I'm glad they did too, would you please explain also that the, the proposal for the paddleball is also a private, that's not a city project either, that's a private developer that's proposing?
Correct, so the, the paddleball project is not city, we're, we're not in the paddle, we're not gonna get it, we have our own paddleball courts at our, our family rec center, for example, but we're not in the private paddleball club. Thank you, pickleball, I apologize.
I'm sorry, it's my turn, too.
This, what was, this is a, a business concern that wants to establish a private pickleball club, and they approached the city looking to buy city property down at the CRA area, there's a vacant lot, which I'm sure you're probably familiar with, next to the Starbucks, and they made a proposal, that proposal is being vetted just for the sale of the property to them. So, we're vetting that proposal to make sure that they have the, the wherewithal financially to support that project and acquire the city property, so that's-
That was my main concern.
Yes, sir, yes, that's being vetted.
Wherewithal.
Right, so that's being vetted, right, and that's what we just spoke of, when, when Mr. Polly came up, that's what we're doing right now, we, we had a forensic accountant look at their business plan, provide them with analysis, and they're, we're waiting for their response back to us.
Are you looking at dropping the price officially at one point four million?
We, we don't need to get into the public comment, I mean, we, we, we'll be, all of us will be here after, we're happy to answer specific questions. We're, we're very close to being done, and we're happy to meet after the meeting, but...
Also, since we have actually quite a lot of updates on the CRA, so I wanted to let you know that thanks to good work of Mr. Warrenfeltz and his team, we've replaced the benches at the Springdale Pond, there are several benches that were in not the best shape, and so there are three new benches as of this afternoon that were installed there. You may ask if we're gonna move forward on, on the improvement, why do we put new benches? Well, these benches are bolted down, we can replace them and use them elsewhere if we, if we wanted to later on. And then the last thing is at the, at the last meeting, the council did ask about the city, an event at the city property, so I would like to ask Mr. Langfeld to come up and give you an update.
Good evening, Mr. Langfeld.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of city council, Carl Langfeld, Leisure Services Director. I'd like to provide a quick update on the October twenty-first discussion regarding hosting a centennial event in the redevelopment area. As previously was noted, hosting events on the vacant lot in the redevelopment area continues to present challenges due to limited available parking outside of that lot, as well as safety and accessibility concerns due to the extreme sandy nature and uneven terrain in this areas. These conditions were confirmed again on a staff visit on October thirty-first. These conditions provide challenges to host an event on that lot, primarily due to safety and accessibility, that extremely soft sand, if somebody has mobility challenges, they're just not gonna be able to negotiate that. However, we do have an alternative in mind, and that is to close Bertha Palmer Boulevard from the access drive that is just south of Starbucks, southward to the access drive where the charging stations are. By doing so, we've created a corridor of easily accessible ground, we've created parking, where we can now use that vacant lot, which is really not suitable for an event, but we can use it for parking, there's areas that, of that ground that are suitable for parking, we can establish handicapped parking spaces elsewhere on pavement to satisfy any accessibility concerns. We now have plenty of parking, we now have a great spot to have an event, we have engaged with our police department, we've engaged with our sanitation department to discuss the feasibility of closing that road for an event. It doesn't affect any access points to any of the shopping centers, it doesn't affect access points to Waverly Terrace, nor does it affect any access points into or out of the complex to Fifty-Sixth Street from those areas. Having an event here, we could have the food trucks along the side of the road, bounce houses, games, rooms for tables and chairs for folks to sit at if they're eating, rooms for vendor tents in this area. To host an event like this would cost about twenty-two hundred dollars for the city to put on, this would include costs for the rental of light towers, rental of porta-potties, rental of bounce houses, also include costs for staffing for leisure services staff, police officers, and public work staff. This, this event is something that we can, we can certainly do, we've already started conversations with some of our local food truck vendors that we've used at previous events, such as Fall Festival, Fourth of July, kind of giving them a tentative date to look at, to discuss availability. They're on board with this, I think we can put something very nice together in December.
Counsel, is that what you want them to do? Everybody good with that?
Sounds like a good event.
That sounds fantastic. Is it, is it twenty-two hundred or twenty-two thousand?
Hundred, twenty-two hundred, I can do a twenty-two thousand dollar event if you like it, it'd be fantastic, I don't have that kind of money.
Okay.
Fantastic, really, really great.
Sounds like everybody's in agreement with doing that, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve that event, and to instruct staff to execute on it, to have a downtown food truck-based event on Bertha Palmer.
Okay, is there a second? That's not worth it, is there a second?
Okay, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good, now it's official.
The last item I have is related actually to a speaker from the St. Vincent de Paul. I'd like some direction from counsel on this issue, because I know that this is time-sensitive, and then our next meeting would not be for a couple more weeks, so if counsel wishes us to entertain this grant-type of approach, we're just...
I would like to do something, I mean, you and I talked yesterday, I called you about this very thing, I was concerned about the SNAP and the... What I was concerned about was specifically our senior programs at Lightfoot, because I know a lot of that was SNAP-funded, but we worked through that. I, I really don't know, kind of come up with that a lot of discussions, so I don't, I don't know what the options are at this point. I mean, I, personally, yes, I'd like to see the city do something to help these people that are in need right now, particularly in Temple Terrace, because that's the cover, these are the people that we're, that we serve. I just don't know what the options and ramifications are. I know that the seniors at Lightfoot were doing something, because they had a whole table full of food that Kevin Woodard was telling me that they had collected, I think that was going to the United Methodist Church. So, there's some efforts underway, but these aren't city per se. Yeah?
I, I know at Fall Festival, Leisure Services was, collected a lot of food, but I think that went to Temple Terrace. Mr. Langfeld, I think, do you have an update on anything, or?
Again, Carl Langfeld, Leisure Services Director. In the past, we have had collection boxes at the family complex, at Lightfoot, at the library, for various food banks and charities over the years. I think now would be a, a excellent time to, to revisit an idea such as this, where we could be a, a collection site to help out, to help out your organization, by simply having those collection boxes at, at various city facilities to, to, to have, have a centralized point for the community to bring in donations, should they wish to do so. And yes, at Fall Festival, we did gather collections for the Temple Terrace Almatry Food Bank.
Yes, my pleasure.
To supplement that, how hard would it be, or would, would be able to mobilize our, our social media network internally to, to get the word out, to beat the bushes of the city, that, that this is available, this is our need, and, you know, we have some specific designated potential- designated potential, uh, recipients. So, it's, um, without singling anybody out, you know, St. Vincent de Paul or, or the individuals, the individual, the other individual, um, uh, food banks. Um, you know, now's the time for Temple Terrace to rally around its people. So, not necessarily, I, I don't know what kind of grants we could put together, uh, in the interim through the city. It would, not something that could probably be done very quickly, but, um, I think, I think we can just rally, rally our, rally our citizens that way, if we had the locations to, for drop-offs. Excuse me.
But, I don't know who to direct this to, or if this is, I don't even know if this is what the legalities of this are. What would be the legalities of the city making a direct financial contribution to this? Because rallying our citizens, we could do that too, but if we gave them money, they've got the infrastructure in place, they've got the distribution network in place, they've got the, they've, they've got this all in place. Now, I know there's concerns about, I don't know how many food banks we have in the city, two, I think? Somebody said three?
Three.
Three?
Three.
Maybe we could-
Greco, Temple Terrace, St. Vincent de Paul, and- Temple Terrace Elementary.
And Methodist is outside the city.
Methodist is actually in Tampa, yeah. Because I'm, this, this is time, I mean, this is time-sensitive. There's people hungry right now. Um, is that, are we gonna run afoul of anything if we did that?
I'm gonna have to research that. I can look into that.
Well, can-
Yeah.
If the council's amenable, what if we did this? What if, if, if that's what, if the council would like to make a donation?
Yeah, I don't know. This is just an idea.
Just assume, for argument's sake, that the council wants to do that, some sort of a grant. What, if you give us that direction, if that's what you wanna do, and you give us that direction, then we can look at the legality as early as tomorrow and figure out if there's any, any issue here that would be stopping us from doing that, and we report that back to you. If there isn't, then we can come up with a framework to provide those dollars, and we'll report back to you. Obviously, it's not gonna be in this meeting, because again, time is, it's very time-sensitive. But we, we sent a note to the council saying, "This is what we suggest doing, uh, and this is what we, you know, would move forward with." Does that sound amenable to the council?
I'm just speaking for me. I don't know what the, obviously, what the, and there, I'd like to hear from the other council member, because they may have things I haven't thought of. This is on the fly. But if we have three food banks, and we gave them $5,000 each, we just budgeted, like, in this current budget, there's $2 million for the ERP system, and we're just spending $400,000 of it. Now, I know that that's not the final expense, but it seems pretty unlikely that we're gonna spend all $200, $2 million of this. So, if we went from $2 million to 1.985 million, I don't think that would-
Make a suggestion-
Yeah, yeah, please.
Rather than take away from the ERP system, uh, could we just say we'd use on the side fund balance?
Yeah, that's-
If it's the number you're talking about. Now, if it's a bigger number, I think we'd wanna think about it, but-
Almost the same thing.
If, if I-
Yes. Vice Mayor, I don't know, I didn't see if you had-
If I may, um, if we could ascertain whether there's three or four, I, I don't know, then I, I would agree with that five, of the $5,000 apiece, we could approve it based upon a final judgment, a final, uh, I don't, I don't exclude anybody. So, we're gonna, if we're gonna, if we're gonna help, let's help the, 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 the proper number, and then they could, you know, and then, that's something, it'd be, it'd be the 18th before we could act again, and they're running out of money now, and they need the food now. We, they, they, they can't wait. I, I would support $5,000 per food bank within, located within city Temple Terrace at an emergency basis to, to, to help out. And I, I could support that and make a motion on that if, if, if we got that far.
Okay. I didn't see councilmember, you had comments.
Just a thought, uh, we have two public supermarkets in our town. Maybe if all five of us ask them to make a donation to these food banks, they would do that. I would be surprised if they would be so cold-hearted as not to. Would that be something worth considering?
They, Publix typically already donates to Feeding America.
Yeah.
And they don't, they're over there too. I know that book.
So, maybe they would donate to-
No, I mean, they do.
-these charities as well.
You have Two Win Dixies as well.
And, yeah, thank you very much, Two Win Dixies. So, we have four supermarkets from major chains that already make food donations. Maybe if we appealed to them directly as the city council in a five-to-zero motion, uh, we would incentivize them or encourage them to make a donation quickly if we could pass something like that tonight.
Being involved with Publix for other donations, for other non-pro, other charities, they have a very strict internal corporate policy, that you gotta go through Lakeland in order to do anything. And I, I, and while it's, while, while, while it's a good thing, but they already have their, they have their agreements with, with Feed Amer, Feeding America and stuff like that. I think that, I think we need to, uh, I don't, it would take too long, it really would. And I think we have, we have an emergency situation.
Just on that real quick, I also heard from Dr. Combs at Metropolitan Ministries today that their food bank is bare, their shelves are bare right now. So, this is-
Right.
This is, yeah, councilmember.
I, I would think I would like to hear from-
Okay. First of all-
Wait, to the podium, you have to come up.
The major, the major food-
Mr. Zalnarski, you have to be-
The major food stores right now give to us. All right? So, in other words, they already are very charitable. Win Dixie, Publix, they, they take their, their somewhat soon-to-be outdated stuff, and they give it to us now. So, we're in contact with them. We, we've never asked them, I guess, or maybe we have, for, for, for dollars. But, and I know we can accept grants. I mean, we are a nonprofit, and so we accept grants every day of the week from, from organizations, and from cities, and from counties. Well, this, this organization doesn't. But St. Vincent de Paul is massive. I don't know how many locations we have globally or nationwide, but we got lots. Um, what I'm referencing is Temple Terrace, it's just, it's just one I'm heading. And so, uh, any food you can give, because, yeah, the shelves are bare, and Saturday's coming. Saturday morning is when the cars line up. And it's just gonna get worse. And what we're doing now is taking money we would normally give to people that can't afford their rent. We offer rent assistance and electric assistance, and some of those funds are being pulled to buy cash because the normal free food we get from, uh, you know, feeding Tampa Bay and all the rest of it, they're holding back because they have their own distribution problems now. So, yeah, anything you guys could give.
Sorry. A, a question, and you probably don't know it, but, um, if the government shutdown ends on a certain day, how long after that do you expect to get your normal system back?
You're absolutely right. I don't, because you know the government. They could say tomorrow, everything is open, but how long does it take to get the checks out? And we're not asking for a million dollars, guys. You know, five thou-
Good, 'cause we're not like-
Yeah, you're not, yeah. But, five thousand, $5,000 would be wonderful, you know? I mean, any, any kind of help. I mean, I, I suggested having a food drive. I mean, not just a couple boxes somewhere, I mean, an organized food drive. You wanna split up between four people. If an entire city, and just think of the good press you guys would get, the city of Temple Terrace is going to have a food drive. You know, uh, somebody mentioned the rec center. And I mean, get behind it, and, and we'll have our volunteers there, and, and the Lutherans, I mean, everybody can show up, and, and, but they're to feed childrens and babies and all the rest of it. This is, this is something that, but to answer your question directly, don't know. But, we don't have to worry about it, because the food will be gone anyways. I mean, the way it is now, by the time the wic starts again, this starts again, and the way the two sides are fighting, nothing's gonna stop anytime soon. But either way, sir, to answer your question directly, I don't know, but there's so lack of, it was gonna take us months to recoup, to get our shelves back.
Thank you, Mr. Zalnarski. Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez.
So, I, I have some questions about the city donating cash. And the reason, and my concern has to do with the fact that, how do we then differentiate for deciding right now, this is an issue that, uh, the city would like to contribute something to? In the future, another organization comes to us, and they maybe are doing something that is considered charitable and important for the community, but we've set a precedent now that, uh, we can't say no to anyone now.
I don't, I don't think I agree with that. We're in a government shutdown, and we're giving to local food banks. I don't think that that equates to, you know, Little League coming and saying, "We want you to buy us new," you know, I don't-
At that time-
Okay, the next time we get in a government shutdown and our people are going hungry, we'll give you money too. I mean, I don't, I don't think this is, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. It, it could be, um, but I, I just don't think this is, uh, opening the door to every, I mean, this is a little different in my mind, but-
Emergency.
Can I say one last thing? Um, you can go to Win Dixie, and don't, I mean, if, why, if, for money, great, buy food. You guys got trucks?
Okay.
Buy food.
If, if staff wants to do a food drive, you don't need us. You, you can do a food drive on your own. I mean, you, you can set that up, you can have a special event, you can do it at the rec, you don't need the city council for that. So, if the staff wants to do that and think that's a better way, the only reason I brought up the direct cash infusion is because we can buy food tomorrow, well, the day after tomorrow perhaps, as opposed to, now, you've got a special event to plan, we have to advertise it, we gotta get a hold of Pastor Legg, and we gotta get a hold of Pastor Purvis, we gotta get a hold on these people and try to coordinate that. I mean, that's not gonna happen for a little while. That takes them, um, and then we gotta collect all this and sort it, which I'm sure they could help with. So, there's a lot of, how do you divide that food up between the different food bank? I mean, that, that, it's easy to say, it's not as quick to do, whereas if we could cut a check for the, for the food banks, that would get food on those shelves by the end of the week.
Because we're gonna run out, guys. There are gonna be-
We, 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 we know.
Sorry. Sorry. Just a question.
So, I don't know what you guys think or wanna do.
I'll make a motion.
So, I'm sorry. Wait, councilmember Travis had something for-
Very short comment. Um, I, I'll make a private donation, we can talk after, but, um, I think it is concerning to think that one group comes here and receives a grant, other groups will take note of that. I kind of agree that it is setting a precedent, and, and everyone has great needs. There will be other people who come in. I, I understand it's an emergency, and, you know, I'm fine responding to that personally. I just don't know whether using a, a grant from our city coffers is the way. I understand it's not a ton of money, 5,000, it's, but multiply that over and over again. I don't, I don't know, it's difficult to predict the future, right?
Just, the city attorney just, excuse me, city attorney just reminded me, if it, these are city dollars now, but if, at the last meeting, if you recall, the city attorney read out a settlement from the fountain shops for 170-
60,000.
160, $160,000. Those are newfound dollars. So, if that gives, if that alleviates some of your concern from the financial perspective, they just wanna put that out there, just so you can think about that as well.
Well, um, if you wanted to make a motion, Vice Mayor, I don't know if you still do, but if you do, my, my suggestion would be that it be whatever amount you think is appropriate times. We think we have three food banks, we may have four, is that true? We don't know.
And you may get more once this works.
Well, but in Temple Terrace, I mean, you're gonna have to, if you wanted to make a motion, you'd have to set a cap.
Yeah. Well, we could sit here all night, make a motion to, to authorize it, up to $5,000 per bona fide Temple Terrace Food Bank, for this, to, to, to help with this emergency situation, um, uh, for a one-time, a one-time donation to them at this point.
What's the cap?
Pardon me?
What's the cap?
Well, 5,000 per, per bona fide food bank.
You'd better set a total amount, don't you think?
All right, 20,000.
Okay.
There aren't that many food banks in Temple Terrace.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Okay. Just reiterate the motion so everybody's clear, it's a $5,000 per food bank.
Food bank, up to, I'm not sure, we only got three or four at this point, to a maximum of 20, so we'd cover up the four food banks.
Okay. Pending legal review.
Right, right. Pending legal review.
Okay. Further discussion of the motion?
I, I just, I have very big concerns about the government, our government, doing this. I, private people, no issue supporting a food drive, no issue having city resources committed to helping the food drive, but I just have a, an issue with actually giving the private entity cash from the city.
The city of Tampa doesn't. They do.
Okay. Mr. Zalnarski. Okay. Councilmember Travis.
Uh, it's a real tough call for me. I can see really good arguments going in both directions. Right now, I'm probably a soft yes, uh, just because it's such an urgent situation, um, but my concern from earlier still stands. I, I think, and, and this could easily get out of hand, there are, there are all kinds of charities, all kinds of groups in Temple Terrace, all of them have similarly articulated, urgent needs, um, and, you know, I'll just reiterate again, I will make a private donation, and, uh, but I, this, this is a really tough call, and, uh, you know, the future's hard to predict, like I said, and, and we're setting a precedent right now. I don't, or are we? I mean, I don't know, has this happened before? Have we done this, something, have something like this?
Not that I'm aware of. Let, let me ask you this, if you don't mind my interruption, is there something we could change in the motion that would make you, either one of you feel more, feel better about it? There's something we could add or some language that would help draw further, a line around this that would?
Mayor.
Well, hang on, he's got the floor.
Yeah. I, I don't have any thoughts right, I yield the floor if anyone else would like it.
Councilmember Travis.
I was gonna say, I have concerns too, and the concern I have is not the 5,000 to St. Vincent de Paul now, it's to the other food banks, that we don't know the size of them. I know the size and scope of St. Vincent de Paul, and, uh, to the Greco thing, that they would love that, and I'm sure it's gonna be used, but I don't know if it's the same, and that's my concern.
That's a good point.
And, um, also, uh, my wife and I, Beth and I, we always donate to St. Vincent de Paul, and we'll do that again, and as councilmember Travis says, we'll talk after. But on this issue, that's my concern.
That's a good point.
If all, all the banks are treated, are, are they all equal? And, uh, you know, that's my concern.
That's a good point. Should, should, I don't know, I mean, should we narrow this down more to the ones we know?
Got hungry families out there.
I know.
That's, you know-
I know.
It's not a blank check, but it's, we got, we got people who aren't gonna eat tonight or tomorrow night. We need to, it, it, it's-
I agree.
And, and I hear what both of you are saying, and I don't-
I, I, I have some concerns.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't really disagree with some of your comments. I'm a little concerned about that too. Um, and I do wanna make it clear to anybody watching, or that, or this is not intended to kick the door open to us directly. I, I am not, I hear what you're saying, I'm a conservative too, and I, but-
Can we say something like, a, a one-time donation to, and I, I would be more comfortable donating directly to St. Vincent de Paul, knowing the infrastructure that exists, if we were to, to say, a one-time donation to this organization to help with the food shortage happening specifically during the time period when resources were cut off?
So, you would feel more comfortable?
I would feel much more comfortable with that than something more generic, because, um, I know the infrastructure with that organization. um, I know the infrastructure with that organization. I know Temple Terrace Elementary has food available for students. I know Greco has food available for students. They do not have the same delivery. Those student, those families also have access to the more structured organizations.
Okay, so that would make you feel a little more comfortable?
That would make me feel more comfortable.
Would that?
But keep in mind, my motion was to get this thing started, 'cause we could sit here and just, well, we, we wish, wish we could. I don't have a problem with what you're saying, I think that, that's a valid concern, and, um, St. Vincent de Paul is up here under organization, under distribution method, and the others are down here. So I agree with you on that.
Okay.
Um, I'm amenable to do anything, we just, we need to do something.
Well, that might be, would that give you any relief to your concerns, or?
Um, just have a, I'm thinking about what this means going forward, and, um, we could vote for the motion today. One thought I have about how we might get a handle on other charities coming to request money going forward would be, um, just a thought, if, if anyone fills out their income tax, there's a checkbox where if you wanna donate three dollars to public campaign finance, right? And loads of people do that. So maybe there would be a possibility to do something like that in Temple Terrace, perhaps on people's utility bills, an opt-in program, where they're willing to contribute a dollar every month toward a food bank charity that we then set up. And then we could collect the money from donations from our, from people voluntarily through an existing billing system, we could put that in a dedicated fund. And then instead of having this discussion every year when people come to request for special requirements, we could say, "We have a dedicated fund for that, there's X amount of dollars in there, it's collected from donations from the people in Temple Terrace, and we're gonna distribute that based on some sort of a standard that we then, or staff develops." That would be, that would be a thought for how we could get a handle on this, if we vote for this tonight, to give it some sort of framework.
An interesting idea.
To do it as a secondary thing.
Yeah.
Not in lieu of, but as a secondary, uh, secondary program within the city.
Right, so if we vote for this tonight, then the question will be, how do we handle it going forward, right? More people might come, that's, that's one of the concerns. If we have a way of collecting donations, managing the donations that we collect, and giving them to people based on some sort of selection process that makes everyone happy, right, then, then we can vote for this tonight and not worry that in the future we'll have to make many, many ad hoc decisions when individuals come here with their requests and their needs, right?
That's, we could certainly explore that.
Explore it, yeah, that's what I was-
Yeah, okay, so.
All right.
Oh, City Manager.
Just, um, not to sway this argument, but, uh, I guess Councilmember Fernandez, with the notion of St. Vincent de Paul, you seem to be focusing on that. And my recollection, um, is that actually the property of St. Vincent de Paul uses the city property.
It is.
So there's already an affinity between the city and St., and that particular charity that was established historically, uh, to allow them to use that city property.
That is, that is city property.
Food pantry.
So technically, we could say that the city's already, in some ways, supporting, not supporting in terms of, but a supporter of-
So, would you be agreeable to amending the motion and restricting this to St. Vincent de Paul? Now, you can keep the amount the same, or you can change the amount, since we're focusing on one? Um, or do you wanna leave your motion the way it is?
Given the-
That was me kinda-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
-over here, I apologize. Um, whatever motion, if you can make sure that, you know, you, you make, that we, uh, you know, whatever we can legally do, my cursory investigation right now, or research, is really, kinda seems to be indicating that the Florida Constitution may not allow us to use tax dollars to do this. But that, again, maybe that lean money might, you know, that wasn't tax dollars. So I just, I think we need to invest, just have the city investigate whether it can do this, and if it can, then maybe-
Well, what we were hoping to do is to make the motion tonight pending your review tomorrow, so that we can move on this.
I understand, I just want, and I plan to have that done by noon tomorrow, I'm sure.
Right.
But I just wanna be sure that already my cursory research is, you know, dealing with tax dollars might be a problem.
I know cities do it, 'cause Tampa does it, Hillsborough County does it. I know that they give money to Men, and they give money to St., I mean, the, I don't know that, how they do it.
Exactly, that's why, just give me the opportunity to-
Is that anybody's comfort level change, if we say, say, five thousand dollars to St. Vincent de Paul, and then twenty-five hundred to the, to the local school food banks, each one of those?
I, I, I kinda was persuaded by Councilmember Fernandez, to remember the schools are supported by a huge organization too, and so, and many of those kids aren't Temple Terrace families, whereas St. Vincent de Paul primarily they are. Um, not, not always, but they service a certain geographic area, which is roughly corresponding to the city.
So how would we, how do we, how do we wanna approach it? I mean, I would retract my motion, 'cause we're starting to, to create a, a cab, it was supposed to be a horse.
Personally, and, and I'm, and I'm not dismissing anything, either one of you have ever, this has been good conversation, I get it. But I, I personally would be okay with just giving a donation to St. Vincent de Paul, even if you up the amount, 'cause we're now, we're going to one. And people say, "Well, you're using, you know, you're setting a precedent." No, I mean, the next time people come to us and say, "Well, wait a minute, this is not the same thing." We were faced with a government shutdown, and a, and people who relied on these programs for food, and that is not the same as buying Little League equipment, or giving to Rotary, or, I mean, I, I support Rotary in Sur Toma, but this is a very acute crisis. This isn't a generally charitable thing, so, I, I don't know, it's-
I, I, I agree with, I agree with the overall concept and, and the framework. I just hate to exclude the other food banks that are out there, that are local, that are, that are scrounging. I've seen, I've seen pictures, and, you know, these, these are hungry kids, you know, these are, these are, the families are going to them. And, uh, you know, I, again, I don't know how many food banks there are, uh, I imagine Lewis has one, but, I don't know, I don't know what, what, what the scope is. So, uh, but I think, I think we need to do something. But I'll, you know, I mean, if, I don't, I, I wanna do something, so I'll be willing to retract my, my motion and come up with a different-
Okay, how about this? What if we gave money to St. Vincent de Paul, because we know that they're here, they're on city land, they service our area? At the same time, we encourage staff to do the food drive idea that we've talked about here, also, that will take a little time, it's not gonna put food on the shelves this week, but that food can be distributed to the other food banks, or, you know, whoever, however they identify. That takes a little longer, but St. Vincent de Paul is here, right, right here, I mean, they're three hundred yards down the road, on our property. I mean, there's a relationship, we know they're feeding families that are, not all of them in Temple Terrace, but they're close. Does that give everybody a little bit of comfort?
I could feel better with that, if, if we're designating the food, any food drive that we do put together to the, to the other food banks.
And, again, the city did do, uh, Fall Festival, and they collected a lot of food, and that went Temple Terrace to the bank. And the Lightfoot goes to Temple Terrace? Do you know?
I have to check with, not just the Metropolitan Ministries.
Metropolitan Ministries?
I think he said it went to Met, Met, yeah, I think that's what-
And, uh, other groups, I know the, uh, Golf and Country Club, they're putting boxes out, I don't know where it's gonna go, but I could check.
I just wanna make sure we don't miss a food bank, 'cause I think Lewis has one, and I think the others, oh, I think all those schools have something, some, some-
I don't want to obligate you guys to do a food drive, was that your intent already?
Well, they're doing, but I have one, I have one question of, is, will five thousand get you how long? A week, two weeks?
Uh, five thousand dollars.
You have to come up to the podium, Mr. Zalnarski.
Exactly.
No, you'll come up to, you have to come up to the podium.
Sorry to make you get up and down, and-
Oh, that's okay. Uh, five thousand dollars would certainly get us through a week or two. 'Cause I mean, what we purchase the food for isn't public's price. And so we will get a distributor, we will pay for the food, um, but it will certainly last us a week or two.
Okay, that's all I don't know, thank you.
What, what happens then?
And, by the way, we checked, we asked them if they live in Temple Terrace, we only deliver. We don't ask them, "Are you rich, are you poor, are the twelve people in your car all there?", but the driver and all the rest, we ask. You're, you're resident of Temple Terrace.
Councilmember Travis?
I, I think it would be a, a great motion to disperse some funds today, just be generous. Uh, your idea as well, very good, um, but I'm having trouble recalling exactly what it was. Could you refresh my memory?
Oh, that we were gonna do a food drive, or organize some kind of-
Yeah, but, you know, obviously, not with a whole lot of production value, maybe, but I'm sure people might be generous, and might catch a little bit of extra there, but I agree that it's not a great idea to, it's a lot of effort to organize a food drive. And maybe for going forward, we just say, look into whether we could tack something onto the utility bills, people voluntarily opt in to pay a dollar extra a month, then that goes into a dedicated fund for the future, because I'm sure this isn't the last food emergency that we'll have. And it might actually be nice if we had some facility to address that. So, maybe a motion with all three of these things is the right tone to end on the night.
With the caveat that it comes from the lean forfeiture, or the lean funds.
Yeah.
Not tax, but the lean, lean reimbursements.
I can't agree to including the checkbox, because, in, in this, in this motion, because that can be a, that can be something that the city really couldn't undertake. I mean, if you, you're talking about the city administering a foundation, essentially, and I don't know that that is within the scope of the city's operations, but, so I, I would definitely not wanna include this with this. I mean, my, my, as I said, my concern, I, I don't wanna establish something where every charity in the city, which we are, we have a lot of charities in the city, we have very good volunteers and, and very generous residents, et cetera, and I just don't wanna be in a place where everybody who feels a need believes they need to come to the government to get that need filled, because we, we are spending other people's money, and we have to be careful to spend it the way other people would like to have it spent. So where I see personally something being worthy of charity, my time and my funds, somebody else might want their money spent in a different charitable way, and it's not up to us to determine how charitable funds should be spent. In this case, I can say, "We have an emergency in the community right now, and a one-time donation in order to alleviate this specific emergency could be warranted." But I don't wanna get in the habit, at least for me, of, as a, a city, as a government person, involved in spending funds in a charitable manner.
I've managed a foundation, you're entirely correct, that becomes a nightmare, everybody, their brothers got their hands up. May I modify my motion?
Okay, so, yeah, we, we've had some really good discussion here, but we need to land the plane.
Yes.
Councilmember Travis?
Just, as a compromise, instead of the collection effort, what about a one-page or policy, where we define how we're gonna do this in the future? That's just, who, who are we gonna select, how are we gonna select them, what standard? Staff can come up with that, and then we'll have some guidance, we won't have to decide on a case-by-case basis every single time.
Hopefully, we're not gonna do it again.
Yeah, I would say, no, I don't have any plans-
Yeah.
-in the future to dispense funds in a charitable manner.
I would agree with that. May I, may I modify my motion?
Yes.
Okay.
But, did you withdraw it?
Because, I was gonna, do I have to withdraw it, or have to modify?
No, I thought you did, I'm sorry.
I offered to withdraw it.
Oh, okay.
No, we didn't, we didn't act on it.
Okay.
Okay, modify my motion to, uh, a one-time emergency, um, contribution slash dispersment from lean fees, lean collection fees, to, um, to St. Vincent de Paul, the amount of five thousand dollars. And with, with the understanding that the, admit, the, the city administration, the staff, will do some type of a food drive, um, that could be disseminate, you know, as quickly as possible, that could be distributed to other food banks within the city, so that they have, you know, it, it, it'd probably be hard to give everybody a, a, a chuck of money, but if they, give them food in a relatively quick manner, um, uh, that would help them.
Pending legal review.
Pending legal review, and, uh, again, the money coming for the lean for, lean reimbursements.
Okay.
Was your second choice?
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you all.
Mayor, comment?
Yes.
Uh, I'm looking at, uh, your webpage, and there's a very big donate button, so out there in the world, uh, help St. Vincent de Paul out, click on the donate button, and you can do it, and we can do it without even talking to you afterwards, so.
Let's, let's, let's double this money and make it twice, yeah.
Yes.
Where were we?
And support the other food banks, okay.
Are we still on City Manager's report? I think, okay, City Attorney's report.
I have the document tonight.
Okay, any other issues to come before the council tonight? If not, we will be adjourned. Thank you all.[1740.21]